Ms. Pakarski.
I'm here, thanks.
Dr. Anderson.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Marin. Ms. Carver Sanders.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Kamarra.
I'm here.
Ms. Seymour Heiser.
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Samesh.
Here.
Mr. Frisch.
Here, thanks.
Ms. Cohen.
Here, thank you.
Ms. Erin Kofax.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
And Ms. Marin.
Here.
Great, okay, we've got everyone. So we just finished up with Mr. Frisch before our lunch break. And I believe the next person up was Ms. Seymour Heiser. And then Ms. Pakarski, let's see, I missed, oh, then Laura Jane Cohen and then myself.
Great, thank you.
Three minutes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, it's okay, I wasn't too long already. My goodness, Tolan.
So, yeah, please go ahead, thank you.
All right, so a lot of the questions I had around fidelity implementation have been asked. So I'm going to get back to some follow-on questions I have about that in a minute. But I wanted to sort of talk a little bit, if you don't mind, about the screening process. I know you talked about adding local norms in and not using the NAGLARI or the NNAT test because the subsections of the CAGAT had a non-verbal point. One of my understandings of the NNAT test is not just better for ESOL students, but potentially for special ed students who have comprehension issues. Can you talk a little bit about the subset of the CAGAT that is non-verbal in comparison and on NAGLARI specifically for twice-exceptional students?
Sorry, there was a little delay, I mean, in my buttons working there, but, um, yeah. So, I mean, the analysis that we did, and we did that in coordination with both the ESOL and special education offices, when we looked at that with Office of Student Testing, was that it was showing that was finding similar students. So I think twice-exceptional students' profiles are very, can be very different. So for some students, that non-verbal component of the CAGAT might find their strengths, but for others, it might be the verbal or the quantitative section because diversity in what comprises a twice-exceptional student is going to be. So I think with the CAGAT, it gives more opportunities. And that's one of the reasons why it's been default tests. Like if a student comes late and we can only give them one test, we would go with the CAGAT because it gives us so much more information.
It's a, on a follow-on question, you said you use the NAGLARI when needed. How is it determined when needed?
That would be a school-based decision in terms of, you know, if a student was, if their ESOL level was such that they thought it might be frustrating for a student to have the verbal section of the CAGAT. I think that the, between our office and Office of Student Testing and the professionals at the school would decide whether the NAGLARI might be a better test for that student.
Yes, I would just caution that until just now, everything you talked about in the NAGLARI has been in relation to ESOL students, but I'm understanding it is also special ed. So I just, I'm worried about implementation of that at a school-based level if our language is only around ESOL and not around special ed as well. And other populations may be appropriate. So I would just caution that piece of it. Okay. The other question I have on local norms, I was reviewing in preparation for this, the report we got from our AAP consultants. And, you know, it was interesting because they talk about using local norms in some of the best practices on page 18, for example. But in the recommendations, they don't recommend actually using local norms. They don't mention it. So that's not that they don't not recommend it, if that makes sense. But in the recommendations, starting on page 42, they don't mention local norms. In fact, what they mentioned is we're looking at this universal screening cutoff score. So I'm kind of curious, you know, the other recommendations seem to come very aligned very neatly with the expert report, but that one doesn't. And so I'm curious what you've seen with local norms, I know you mentioned Montgomery uses it, and how that relates to the universal screener cutoff score and relates in terms of student ability to access and really get the enrichment of AAP. I'm just, since it wasn't one of the recommendations, I'm kind of curious what their thinking was around using it.
So I will start and then Sloan, Wayne, if you have some other ideas. But I think, you know, there, one of their main recommendations was around the referrals. And that is part of the Virginia regulations that I, through surveying other districts in Virginia, don't, don't quite know how we would change our referral process and still be in compliance with the regulations. But our real problem, if you dig down to why, why we're having some of the issues that we're having, is that not, we're not getting students from each school represented at the central selection process if we're relying on parents to do referrals. So the reasoning, that reasoning was there, we actually, if you read the literature from Plucker and Peters, they were huge advocates of local norms. And we did have an opportunity to share with them about some of the ways that we were responding to make sure that they were aligned with their intentions in the recommendations. And they were really excited about, about that being in there.
So I haven't read the literature, right? I'm basing it on this report and I don't have, to Ms. McLaughlin's point, the data. So I just, I understand, you know, when I saw the numbers of 30% versus 70% referral, I understand the concerns on referral. But that doesn't really go to my question around why was local norms picked when it wasn't one of the recommendations? I just want to understand more about it without having to go do the literature reading myself, which I can do, but I, that's kind of what we have you for. So if you could tell me like what it is specifically about that that gets to the goals of VDOE, I appreciate you framing it on the VDOE requirements. And why it wasn't recommended by our experts, but we're using it? And how it's being used in Montgomery County and what the results have been there? I just want more data and information around that.
Um, so I'm not 100% sure I'm, I'm understanding, but I believe that the, they may not have named it explicitly as a recommendation, but, but I do believe that that is something that they, that they advocate for. You know, when you look at some of the things that are done for equity in gifted education, you know, the two big things that pop up over and over again are the use of universal screening so that you take the teacher bias component out of, you know, some systems would go with, you have to have a referral first from a teacher and then you get to have a test. So for a long time, we've been using universal screening, that it takes that piece out of it. And the second piece is, and it links, as you said, to the Virginia Department of Education, definition of gifted and what we go by in Fairfax, which is you're looking at students in comparison to students of similar age background and experience. So local norms is more closely aligned with that. Our big goal there is to get, is to get students to the table. We want, I mean, we can't, students can't be found eligible if they aren't even considered. So you, the use of the local norms expands our net of who we're going to consider.
This still doesn't, with all due respect, and I really appreciate your answer, I really do, and I'm not trying to disrespect, but that doesn't answer my question. So what really struck me, if I may finish my sentence, there was many recommending, you know, when they discuss the literature, many of the things they discuss were recommendations, and this one was not. And I'm really puzzled as to, again, what happened in Montgomery? What research have we done? What did we do to say, even though they didn't recommend this, and it wasn't even embedded in the recommendations, you know? That's why I read it really carefully. Why did we recommend it and what are we basing that on?
So I can try a little bit, and then Kirsten, I want you to maybe share a little bit more information about, you know, what other school systems like Montgomery are doing. I will caution us that Montgomery has a very different system of academics than, than we do. We serve more students, for example, than Montgomery serves because we really do believe, and we are required by the state to identify students with potential, not just students who are already demonstrating high levels of achievement. I, I think you raise a really good point, though, Ms. Seymour Heiser, that the researchers were silent, really. What are the?
I just don't understand why it needed there.
Absolutely, and you're right. They really were silent on a number of specific recommendations for how to do some of the things that they were saying that we needed to do, right? Like, how would we revise our screening process in a way that made the most sense? But we did have follow-up conversations with the, with the research team, as, you know, as Kirsten said, to try to dig into that and get a little bit more of that information that was not present in the report. You know, we're certainly familiar with, you know, what some systems are doing. And Kirsten's very familiar with, you know, the best practice research literature around advanced academics and eligibility processes. And, you know, the use of local norms is, I would say, more of an emerging a best practice to get more representation, for equity of representation in students and programs. It's not used widely around the country. It is, I would say, a newer strategy, and it is one, again, that we did reach back out to the research team to get more information on in terms of their recommendations. So that additional conversation, the additional research, and then the modeling, I would say, that we did and shared as part of this presentation, really led us to the conclusion that that would be a significant step forward in terms of equity of access and opportunity. And you can see that in the table we provided in terms of the percentages of kids being much more proportional and representative of our demographics overall. Now, that's just getting you to the, to the screening process. It's not saying that you're being found eligible, but it's nevertheless a big step forward. Kirsten, anything else on other districts or Montgomery?
I think a big part of it, too, is just to think about, you know, what you're identifying for and making sure the match for what you're looking for matches what, how you're identifying. And, and so I echo just everything that you're saying. And Montgomery is one that we can, you know, another very large system that we can see how it happened, but it's also, we need to pay attention to, their programs are different than ours, so it's not an exact one-to-one correlation there. And, and again, this is, this is not, you know, someone is being found eligible. This is just who we get for consideration. And that, that is just, you know, that's just a small portion of everybody who gets to consideration because there's still the referral pathway.
I'll take a go back, I just want to understand it better and not, I understand the purpose, how, why does it work is what I'm trying to get at. I'll take a go back, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation today and all of the hard work that went into it. And I'm glad to now, so many months later, kind of be able to bring together our, our presentation from the report that we had and, and all of the hard work from you all. You know, my first is going to be sort of my constant refrain, so you won't be surprised to hear it, but I'm disappointed in the three-year timeline for the AARTs. I think we have already seen in this last year the difference that having AARTs in our Title I schools has made for kids. I mean, I just, and it's amazing to look at the impact even on things like SOL scores. When you look at, you know, what that kind of model and the opportunity for kids to be exposed to different kinds of thinking, all kinds of switches that it's turning on for kids who would not have had that experience anywhere else. So I would, from home, sorry. So I would strongly recommend, strongly recommend speeding that timeline up as much as humanly possible. As I said, the three years to me, it's just, it's just too long and we miss so many kids in the process. My second question, I'm glad to go after Ms. Seymour Heiser about the use of the NAGLARI. I just want to make sure we're not ruling that out when we're thinking about our kids who are English language learners in particular, and our sped kids for whom that CAGAT is a piece. Again, I will argue the cottage industry that has grown up around CAGAT still concerns me. That former second grade teacher of all the kids in my class who would say, "Oh, I've been doing this all summer in a prep program." Again, let's either provide more opportunities then for that kind of exposure for all of our kids. And maybe that's the best way to go about it. I'm not trying to punish parents who want their kids to be given opportunities. The other is, I just want to make sure with local norms, you know, we have such a transient population, especially with our military families who are in one school, leave, and then luckily come back to us. And so my concern is for a kid like that in the school they're coming from, if they were locally normed into AAP, what's going to happen if they come back and they're at the school down the street? How do we kind of ensure that consistency for them? Because I certainly wouldn't want kids to feel punished when they even come back to us.
I think on your, on your last question, eligibility follows the student. So you, you know, once you're found eligible, you don't have to go through that process again. That wouldn't be something that would be an issue for a student that might be moving from school to school.
Awesome. And the workshop model, when we, when we talk about it, I guess, I, I also would love, if you don't mind, speaking to small schools. I know, you know, for us here in the neighborhood, we had a local-level board program. Parents loved it, but trying to make it work with so few kids, massive, and split grade levels, multi-grade level classes, and implementation of it, just at least in, in our school for a principal, did not work. So what supports can we put in for small schools?
So I, I would like to find out more about some of the challenges that the small schools had. My personal bias, obviously, is that I believe a lot more students can handle this curriculum than, than people might give them credit for. And so I don't know if in those particular situations, if they were looking at just students who were eligible through central selection rather than looking at a broader group of students at the school. I would need to know more information about that. But as we roll this out, we are trying to gather information from some of our smaller schools that are successful with this, to gather, you know, how they handle some of these things so that as we bring more smaller schools on, they have some folks to talk to about and problem-solve about their tool.
I think that would be super helpful because I, I do think that there are some small schools who sort of felt left on their own to figure out if they needed to phase in, like, level-three kids into the four to build classrooms and all that. So thank you, that would be very helpful, I appreciate that.
Ms. Pakarski.
Thank you. I apologize if these have been asked, I'm going to keep my camera off because my internet is going in and out, so I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time staying logged in. But, but thank you for all your work, and I appreciate you working with us as being managers and answering questions and trying to gather all this data. I absolutely agree that there's lots of talent in our school. We, we have to find a way to develop that talent. And as you said, I, I fully agree that a lot more students can handle this rich curriculum than I think we give credit to. So some of the, the questions I have center around identification. You know, I know if you take the NNA out and we're just focusing on the CAGAT now, you know, that's, that's just a one chance for that child. And what happens if they had a bad day? And now, you know, we do know that especially some of our 2E kids, our children who have ADHD just don't do well in these group, you know, testing. And, and now we're taking out the optional psychological testing. I do understand why, but what, what do those kids do? I mean, how will they get identified?
No, thank you for that, Sloan. Those are conversations that we've been having as well. So one thing I just want to clarify is that it has been a longstanding policy that children are allowed any time between second grade and seventh grade to have a one-time retest, and they can pick either the NAGLARI or the CAGAT. We envision that that would continue to be a practice because we do know that there are times when students might have a bad day. So that would continue to be an option for, you know, if, if one particular student had that. I also think that, you know, we, we didn't take the NAGLARI completely off of the table. We left it in there as an option, as a school-based decision, if that's something we think would be better for a student. And so that, that remains in there. So we're, we're really just talking about as a universal for that particular one. Sloan, did you have something to add?
Well, I was just going to add in, in full transparency that I've been skeptical about removing the NNA previously. So the Office of Student Testing and the AAP team did some modeling on this a couple of years ago and, you know, brought it to me. And basically, we looked at the data and it was, it was very evident that we were not identifying additional students with the NNA. It wasn't picking up those additional students. Nevertheless, I was conservative and reluctant to let it go. We looked at it the following year and the same trend was there. Now, the research team externally has looked at that and confirmed it a third time. So I definitely could understand the reluctance to let it go. I've kind of lived that for, you know, three rounds now. And I do think it, it's not picking up the additional students that, that we wanted to. So it's not really necessary. And I do think leaving, you know, leaving the option in place where we do think individual students might need it, I, I think is really the best path forward, or I wouldn't have brought this recommendation forward. So I just wanted to acknowledge that some of the questions board members are asking are questions that I've asked myself and the team has asked for the last couple of years.
Sorry, thank you. I do appreciate that, and I'm not advocating necessarily for keeping the NNA, especially when we were testing kids so young, I, that was very problematic for me. But we are saying it's going to be left up to schools, school-based decision. That's a problem when we start to talk, you know, when we talk about fidelity of implementation and so on and so forth. But also, it is a problem for me when we are expecting our parents to choose into retaking this test because we know that many parents just don't know this or don't necessarily take the initiative. That worries me, and it worries me that this kind of gateway second grade is still there as part of this recommendation. So anyway, that, that to me is a worry, especially when we're taking out the psychological testing, the optional testing, which we know is actually much more accurate than group ability tests. So anyway, that's that. What would, what's going to happen to the schools that already are centers? If we go to local level four in all schools?
Well, I don't think there would be anything dramatically different than, than what we see now. Again, we've been expanding local level four programs, really intentionally and strategically for the last five years as an equity strategy, and it has been helpful. It hasn't gotten us everywhere that we need to be or want to be, but it has been very helpful. And, you know, that's, we're proposing the same process here that when we implement the local level four, the families would still have the choice to attend the base school or to attend the center. You know, we do see that, you know, many families oftentimes do choose to stay at the base school. Not all of them do, but many do. And so in that instance, you know, then the enrollment, obviously, is going to be drawn down a little bit at the center. But that hasn't been a problem previously when we've implemented programs. And that's why we work really closely with the facilities department in the region offices to make sure that, you know, we've identified a good process to, to work through the implementation timeline with to make sure that there aren't going to be any negative, you know, consequences or impacts from a facility side, you know, or from an enrollment standpoint. And I think, you know, it's, it's worked out previously over the last several years, and we would follow that same process here.
You actually bring up the capacity question that I am very much interested in. But before we get that, I, just to clarify my, my prior question, I'm really talking about... Okay, if you could actually just address the capacity, that's much more pressing, thank you.
Well, the capacity issue largely is at those neighborhood-based schools that would be implementing a level-four program. We need to make sure that we have sufficient capacity for more students to be able to make the decision to get their base school. And we do have several schools that are on the list that do not currently have a local level-four program, where we do have facilities, capacity issues that are going to be a challenge. And those are the schools, again, that would be at the end of the timeline so that we would have an opportunity to work, again, with our facilities team and our region team to try to address what those challenges would be as we would anticipate more students would be choosing to stay at that particular base school. So it is complicated, there's a number of variables in it. And, you know, again, it really takes the collaboration across multiple departments, along with the schools, to be, to be able to work through that process in a way that's not disruptive.
Thank you, I'll take a go back.
Okay, now I have Ms. Marin.
Hi there, good afternoon. Thanks for this. It's, it's nice to see the follow-up from initial discussions earlier this year. So I just want to first say that, you know, it is a bit surreal to talk about this while we're working so hard to return kids to school. And, you know, I just want to say, especially because I've been getting asked this question a lot, you know, why are we focusing on this now? And it's because there are things that are mission-critical that we have to keep moving along and that staff has been working on. So I am glad to talk about it. It's just hard, and I'm, I'm certainly not looking at this in a vacuum away from return to school. We currently have a situation with staffing where we don't seem to have enough staff to return to school. So I think the AARTE teacher is a game changer. But given that we don't have enough staff now, the pipeline question is very legitimate. And some of my colleagues referenced that, you know, we need to urge ourselves to not fund in silos. And I, I really think that that is key here because we know that we have the Teach for Tomorrow program. So can we amp up there and, and start training AAR teachers who can come and fill these needs in addition to other staff needs? There were other things mentioned, like facilities and such. What I like about your presentation, Dr. Versidio and staff, is that you've laid out a multi-year trajectory, you've attached the budget, you've responded to the comments that we had hired consultants to do. I think that type of thinking is what this board needs to do and look across all these different funding areas and make decisions. Because if we really want to be talking about or doing equity work, then it's this kind of investment that's needed. I will say about the full-time AARTE, so in my children's elementary school now, the principal for years had been trading funds, which is allowed, to get to a full-time FTEA ART, and that, as I said, has been game-changing. What concerns me in some comments I've heard back and forth today is about the constant tension between local-level flexibility and central office support and what's being provided. I liked Karen Keys-Gamar's comment about, you know, understanding what's effective for pipeline development of students, and I'm talking about the student pipeline. You know, basically, almost an audit, it might not be in Esther Co.'s office, but just an audit of what is best getting students, you know, ready for AAP, their families ready. I, I think that having an AARTE is equalizing. I, you know, I do think about Dr. Ricardi's question about, will it be the same level of fidelity and implementation? And I think these are really important questions. So the more we can benchmark, audit, plan to gather that data is going to be really critical. And also, look at the other budgetary places. critical and also look at the other budgetary places. I did have a staff availability of five to six days being able to participate in a centralized screening process. How does that work? Are classroom teachers pulled out or are there subs five days for students? If you could speak to that, please.
Sure. So, I mean, we have a huge, um, we don't just have a hundred people. We, we gather a hundred people a day. So it's a requirement that all AARTEs participate in at least two days of those five days. And then for the most part, everybody else who participates in the central selection will come for just one day. Um, and our office does, that is part of our budget, is to provide substitutes for people who both come to the training to become a member and for the day that they serve on the committee.
Great. Thank you. And I, I welcome any comments on my overall comments, Dr. Stellan or, or Kristen, anyone from board.
Well, I, I would just say briefly, I mean, I, I would concur with your comments. I mean, really thinking strategically about the goals that the board has for advancing equity, you are going to have to look at, you know, budgets across the entire school system to be able to do that. So I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm glad that this report helps a little bit with that. And I certainly could understand your need for additional data and additional information to, to take that to a deeper level. So, and again, we'd be happy to provide that additional data that would be more helpful as, as a part of a follow-up next step. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I forgot I had a multimedia presentation. I just wanted to share. I picture all of this like a sound system, all of these things, TJ admissions, AAP, all of these things is constantly in my brain. And so this is just one of those buttons and we're moving it up a little or moving it down and other things all in, in, so. There's something special in there. Thanks.
Love it.
Thank you so much for the visual because I'm skipping, skip to one of my next steps was, um, looking at this within a strategic framework and, uh, you know, just really making sure that we have the view of, you know, what we're doing for local level four in elementary school, our centers in elementary school and middle school, what we're offering at our high schools, you know, do we have access to these programs, um, all across the county? I know, for example, um, you know, the Tyson's area, it's very difficult to have access to ID because of the capacity issues at Marshall, just one example. And I am super excited about the CDE study that you mentioned and how all of those programs can fit in within this whole strategic view as well, such as watching all those buttons that Ms. Marin pointed out. I will put that down as a next step. Uh, my other next step will be, um, with the CIP process coming, um, if we are looking at some of these programmatic changes, you know, I know this is just one program and a change of perhaps several, um, but how do we highlight that within the, the CIP so that we're keeping that in mind as we're making these capital decisions? So I know that process is starting, um, in the next month. I did also have a question on, um, the teacher professional development and the preparation of teachers that participate in this. It is, you know, a significant number of teachers and I, I know, and you can refresh my memory, there's a, a certificate program that, um, teachers participate in. They have to take a certain number of courses, um, to be, I believe, in AARTE. If you could just explain that a little bit more. And, um, I don't see any funding in the, the budget last night associated with that kind of training. You know, do we need to be careful about, you know, at the time, having subs, you know, et cetera? So if you could talk a little bit more about that, that would be great.
Great. So, um, I'll talk about the certification. There's actually two major components that we look for. One is, I believe you're referring to the endorsement. So there's a Virginia endorsement that comes anywhere in Virginia. And then we also have created a Fairfax version of that that doesn't require tuition to universities and allows us to do that in a more cost-efficient way. And we do that through our academy courses. So we have, uh, a combination of online, face-to-face, hybrid, um, academy courses on foundational topics in advanced academics as well as, um, pedagogy of that. And so that is one major thing. I, I say when folks are getting started, it's even more important that they get the training in the curriculum that they're going to use because that's the practical, day-to-day, very concrete things that teachers are going to need to have instruction happen at that level, um, you know, right away. So the, the endorsement gives the why behind that curriculum and the curriculum gives the how. So both of those pieces are important. Our AARTEs, uh, for the most part, I, I can't think that we hired of anyone who hadn't at least started their endorsement. And they can, we asked them to speak about, um, the use of advanced academic curriculum in, with, with all different types of students. A lot of them come to us as primary teachers, so they'll talk about use of the curriculum before level four is even a thing. Um, and some of them are general education teachers and some of them have been center teachers. So we, we gather from, you know, there's, our academy classes and our professional learning has been open to all teachers. So that's where our pipeline is coming from. We do that, you know, I don't know that we need a separate item for that because it's already going on and we're growing from that pool and we have candidates.
Okay. And you feel confident you'd have enough people to fill these positions over the next couple of years?
Well, that is part of the phase in. I mean, that's why, you know, to do it all in, in one year, to start next year with it, I, I am not confident that we would have the pool, but I do believe that over three years, we would have the pool. We would have some for next year and some for the year after, and then we would be at full capacity, so.
Great. Can you talk a little bit more about the referral process? I know you say like 70% of the kids enter, uh, the pool through referrals. Do you have a breakdown at all, like how much of that referral, those referrals are from parents, from teachers, you know, other sources?
So we only just recently added being able just to distinguish between the different types of referrals for a screening application. In the past, it was just kind of a big clump. But we have recently put that in there. For the most part, we would be able to break that out and capture it, but what I would say, you know, it gets in the weeds a little bit, but there's an extra complication of it is that some schools, when they advocate and they do a score for a while, they would, they would reach out to the parent and encourage the parent to do a referral. And sometimes they just actually do the referral. So there's different things going on and that would show up as just looking like a parent referral, even though it may have had the school advocating. That makes sense. But we do have data. I just know that there's some little things in there that might make it a little not exact.
So would you say that this referral process is, um, really one of the better places for parents to be involved? I mean, I'm sure, you know, I feel that parents need to have a role in identifying students that would benefit from these services.
Um, I think that it's important, I, I think it goes back to understanding our whole continuum. And yes, I do think parents notice things at home that, that folks might not notice at school. And so it's important, um, whether it's on the referral form or the optional question questionnaire, um, for there to be that, that voice. I also know that in some of our schools that have a full-time resource teacher, they work very closely with the parent liaison to do that, reaching out and supporting parents to fill out the questionnaire, um, especially when it might come to things like translating to be able to capture some of the things that parents are noticing at home. So I do think that that and, and, you know, the family engagement to understand what programs are available and helping us understand what you see about your child at home are very important.
Right. That family engagement piece is key. I also wanted to support some of the things my colleagues mentioned earlier, the accountability piece. And, you know, I think people talked a lot about, um, the what would be in that accountability? And I think there was at least one person that mentioned the who is accountable for, you know, those measures. And I think that that's really important too. Um, I think sometimes in a district of our size, we have our fivers, but we don't ever, we don't figure out who's responsible for making sure those things happen. So I would advocate for that. Okay. So I, uh, in the last board member to speak, um, for three minutes, um, I do have a go-back list and I believe I have, um, Dr. Anderson is our first person for, um, a 90-second go-back. Um, what I would ask my colleagues to do, if you don't mind, I have most of you down. I think there may be one or two people that didn't need a go-back. I'd ask maybe if everybody could put their hands down and we'll let Dr. Anderson start. And then if you can, anyone else that would like a go-back, if you could raise your hand, that would be super helpful for me. So Dr. Anderson, why don't you go ahead? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'll be really quick in my 90 seconds. Dr. Bradbrand, you decided to talk a little bit regarding the history upon which these centers were founded. Can you speak a little bit more to that? Because I'd, I'd like to be sure that I have a full understanding of what you began to talk about.
Yeah. You know, I don't have the full history of all of gifted education here at my fingertips. I did serve on a task force with Secretary Carney and they brought in a speaker that looked at the history of gifted education in the Commonwealth. And a lot of that work happened in the seventies. As you know, in 71, Virginia desegregated its school system, one of the last states in the country to do so. And I think, uh, we need to serve all kids, but we need to be mindful of how certain structures were historically created. And I think one of the massive cultural things that we're doing here is we're basically saying, think about a high school where you didn't have a varsity football team. We're really saying that in many of our elementary schools for decades, we didn't have the equivalent of a varsity football team for kids to get advanced academics. We're putting that in now over the next three years in all of our elementary schools. I think that's a powerful statement to our students, to the staff that are in those schools, and most importantly, to our families and communities, that you can find talent anywhere, in any zip code, in any pyramid, in any school. And that is a narrative that we need to double down on. We have talent everywhere in FCPS, not in just one or two schools or one or two pyramids, it's throughout. And we're committed to doing the talent development and that's what this, this proposal today, the support from an outside consultant, is really saying.
Thank you for that. I, I just really wanted to be sure to accentuate the point that these centers were founded on a different, um, on a different approach with a different understanding. And we have to be sure that while, to not perpetuate some of the inequities that created their development today, because our focus should be on servicing all of our students. Similarly, as one of my colleagues said, this is just one of a number of steps that we need to take, including reviewing TJ admissions, to be sure that we're serving all of our students. I, I did have one other, two other quick questions. On slide, I can't remember, but it talked about broadening dual enrollment. How many of our schools currently have dual enrollment? And what does that mean when you say this will be an area to broaden?
Uh, Dr. Brusilio, could you talk a little bit about dual enrollment? I know we have many of our schools and we've been expanding it, particularly actually even very recently working with Dr. Kress at Nova, but, uh, Dr. Brusilio?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I'm sorry, I don't have, um, committed to memory the course offerings. Dual enrollment is, uh, something that we do offer across the school division. We are trying to expand the dual enrollment program offerings. As Dr. Bradbrand said, we've been working very hard, not just with the president of Nova, but also with George Mason University, to make sure that those credits are transferable into four-year universities. So we've been working very hard on that expansion. We actually just, um, initiated an agreement with Nova, um, to increase dual enrollment online courses, um, so that students would have access to online courses, which will create even more equity, of course, across the entire school system, uh, because students wouldn't be dependent on having to have those courses offered at their base school. The reason that we have some difference in terms of the course offerings from school to school, um, really is only due to teacher licensure and teacher certification. The state requires that, uh, teachers have a master's degree or, um, close to a master's degree in the content area that they're teaching, not necessarily a master's degree in education or educational leadership or curriculum. It has to be in the content area. So, um, that unfortunately does lead to some differences in terms of course offerings across the system. Uh, but we're excited about the new online course offerings, uh, partnership that we have with Nova that just started a few weeks ago. I mean, we will be working to expand that over time. So that's really what we're talking about.
I, I would definitely love to get some more information regarding that because I want to be sure that there's equitable access to all of our students across FCPS. My other question is regarding the funding of AP centers. Can we, can you walk us through how does that happen? Or how is it different from other elementary schools, if it is?
It's really not, it's not any different. They have professional development that is available, um, is available to all Fairfax County teachers and, and, and schools. So it's not specific to centers. The only budget item that is different for centers is that there's a transportation, associated transportation budget. But, but everything else is just part of our, our bigger professional development.
What is that transportation budget, if anybody has that offhand?
I would really pick it up.
I, I can add that to my next steps. You talked a little bit in terms of how schools are going to be selected, um, but you talked about it in terms of capacity. Is that the only criteria?
No, like, like I was saying earlier, a lot of it has to do, um, also with the readiness of the school. So, you know, a lot of our schools have been taking steps already, um, to move in the direction of local level four. They've been doing more curriculum integration work of the AP curriculum, been using it more frequently than, uh, other schools. And really the readiness factors, um, are the other set of factors. So there's kind of facilities factors and readiness factors, um, that include, in terms of readiness factors, curriculum work, professional development, a leadership commitment on the part of the principal, um, community engagement work that's happening. Um, so there's really kind of two buckets of, of variables there.
Thank you. Last question, if I have time, the role of the 2E specialist that was identified on one of the slides, can you talk a little bit in terms, to, in terms of what that person will be doing more specifically?
So we, um, we envision that the shared position between special education and our office, right now, we do a lot of that collaboration and we, um, we spread it amongst our specialists and there are some who take on more of that than others and it takes up quite a bit of their times, uh, talking to parents, finding out about their cases, checking in with special education, um, and following up. So I think that that, that would be part of the, the position, would be making sure that there was that focus. And then a bigger part of that would be about professional development, um, for the schools. So one of the things that we've more recently tried, we've been doing broad professional development that, um, it gets us so far, um, but each child's profile is unique. And so it, sometimes it takes a lot closer of an, it takes a closer, uh, collaboration with the school. And so that person would be more available to go out and work with teams, um, to more, look more closely at what specific students need instead of just the broad topic of choice exceptional, which can mean a lot of different things. So right now, we're trying to juggle all of that between our team and the special education teams and, um, it's, it's a lot and it takes away from some other efforts that we would, we would like to be able to, um, also attend to. And so it would just give us that, that person who would have the dual expertise of both special education and advanced academics to be able to, to coordinate that.
Thank you. Do I have any time left?
I'm timing for 90 seconds. I am timing for 90 seconds and Dr. Anderson has 22 seconds left.
Thank you. Very good.
Also in the presentation, you talked about finding a replacement for the JIBbers and that this would be something that is, um, taking place in the school year. So what will we use this year? Will we continue with that, um, with the process? What's the process for this year that we're currently in? Is it status quo?
Yes. For this year, we do intend to continue using the JIBbers. We, we're talking, continuing to talk with the researchers to try to get a little bit more information about exactly where their concerns lie. You know, the concern about parental influence on a rating scale. We're still trying to figure out how will a different tool help with that problem? What it comes down to a lot of the time too, is that any tool is only as strong as the professional development you do on the people who end up having to use it. Um, and so making sure that our professional development to be able to use the JIBbers as a tool, um, is reaching all of our teachers. But for this year, I mean, the, the report also showed that we actually, it helps us with some of the areas that we're worried about. It does help us define students in underrepresented populations and And it is a pathway, I know there's a lot of focus on testing, but we like to try to de-emphasize that, because that, that tool really helps us to see strengths in students when they don't have high test scores. And the teachers give specific anecdotes of things that the students do in class that give the committee the evidence that they want to see in terms of why the student would need Level 4 services, even if their test scores weren't super high.
Thank you. My last question is regarding outreach. I didn't see that as part of the presentation, because this pipeline issue will continue to be an issue if parents do not know of its existence. So I would love for you to speak to that, and thank you.
So I would say our APAC charge, I think it was, was it last year? No, last year was about K-2 access. The year before was around family engagement and strengthening our communications and making sure it was accessible to families. Their top recommendation within that was the full-time resource teacher. Again, a lot of these things, you need somebody to be leading at the school. You know, we've tried to do things from a central office level to make things more accessible on our website. We've created narrated PowerPoints in multiple languages that are available for parents to be able to see things at any time. But it really is that, that family engagement from the local school level that's going to make a difference. And having ART there, being part of the school leadership team, the instructional leadership team at the local school, working hand-in-hand with the equity lead, and the parent liaison is, is going to be the important piece of that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I do have, based on the hands that are up, I have for go-backs. I'll just list the names, Karen Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Mesh, Ms. Kees-Gamara, and then Ms. McLaughlin, which would be, and Ms. Sizmar Heizer, which is the order that we had before. So Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you would like to go next.
Thank you very much. This has been helpful. I'm glad to follow Ms., Dr. Anderson. Would like to bring your attention to two things. I know that Dr. Anderson asked for a history lesson on these programs. And so in the development of those, that history lesson, I would suggest that the National Defense of Education Act of 1959 be looked at, which is the beginning of gifted programs in the United States, as well as the Charlottesville memo that has been referred to in a number of groups, and then how it, how our gifted programs here in Fairfax County evolved. Secondly, we talked about funding. Dr. Anderson mentioned whether or not there were any differentiation in funding. And I would draw my colleagues' attention to the differentiation in funding that is provided per pupil allocations for enrichment at the center-based programs versus at the local level for non-Level 4 identified students. And if somebody could give us the exact quantification of the difference in those funding levels for enrichment, I think that would be very helpful. Similarly, TJ, TJ, in 19, this was a question I posed when I first came on the board for funding for TJ students. They have 27.3 more teachers at TJ versus our local school, our local high schools, which is the equivalent of $2,000 per student. If I can have a go-back, I will actually get to my questions then. But I did want to give those numbers out there.
So I would respond just two quick things, Ms. Corbett Sanders. So the one thing, I'm glad that you brought up some of the reports to kind of look at that history. And I do just want to acknowledge this, you know, this is something that even at the level of the National Association for Gifted Children, and it's been for the past couple of decades, the field has been wrestling with equity issues and the ways that gifted education has evolved. So there are the roots of it, and then there are the ways that the field has responded over time to what we know is really important in terms of equity. And NAGC did put out an equity statement over the summer that we can share with everybody if they would be interested in that. And then also for the per-pupil funding for students who are identified for Level 4, I have checked multiple times with the budget office to make sure that I'm not mistaken on this, but any student who's a Level 4 eligible, that same per-pupil allocation would happen whether they're at a center or a local Level 4. And that would, that would help to supply some of the curriculum that they need to get.
Correct, but it's a different funding level than Level 1, 2, or 3. It's a higher amount per pupil for those students that are identified.
Okay.
And similarly, TJ.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Darnak Kofax?
I'm going to try to race through this. I appreciate that Karen brought that up about the gifted education when it began. I mean, if you just do a quick search, gifted education began in the 1800s. And the expansion in the 50s and 60s came about as a part of the space race, you know, to get science and math curricula involved. So Kirsten, I would like a better analysis of this. Of course, there have been unintended consequences, and that's why we are here where we are today. So yes, we need to identify potential. Yes, we need to provide opportunities. I support everything here that gives students who will thrive if they're given the chance to invest in these strategies. All of the things that we have been talking about for years. Advanced academic resource teachers, young scholars, front-loading, I support this. It's well beyond time to invest in this. This is my other concern, though. We can't slow down those that are already ahead. There are so many volumes written about the social and emotional needs of the most advanced learners. It's indeed a form of special education. Dr. Braybrand, I ask you, I would like your assurance that we will not be disbanding centers for kids who truly need this. And will the centers be based on national norms?
Ms. Darnak Kofax, as Dr. Presidio said, there's no intention in any of the recommendations to do away with the centers. As far as the national norms, I will defer that to Dr. Presidio about the centerpiece.
So there would not be a distinction for eligibility centers or for local Level 4 programs, just like there is not now. What do we have, like 97 local Level 4 programs, Kirsten?
67.
Yeah, 97. So we use the same eligibility process for eligibility for a local Level 4 program or for a center. And the choice rests with the parent and with the family. If they choose center, that's fine. If they choose the base school, the local Level 4 program, that's fine as well. So we would not be changing that process with the use of local norms. It's still qualified for participation at your local school or at a center.
All right. But isn't that different than what the centers are now?
It's really just where you're choosing to access your service. I mean, I understand that, you know, there's reasons that parents make either choice, either for the local school or for the center. But again, it's the same eligibility process. It's the same curriculum. It's the same professional development.
So we're currently using local norming at the centers?
We're using our division norming now for the eligibility. We're talking about, which is based on national norms. But what we're talking here is switching and moving to local norms so that we can increase the pool in terms of the students that we're capturing based on where they're coming from, again, in accordance with the VDOE definition and regulations of comparing students in terms of similar age, experience, and background. We think it's a more equitable process to move to the local norms to the division eligibility process.
So I guess I need further understanding. I guess I'm not understanding then. Will local norms be across Fairfax norms, or will they be by school?
It would be by school.
Well, and I think it's important to say too, this is just a way to get students to the table for consideration. It's not that these students are automatically found eligible. It's that a portfolio will be put together on them, and then they will be screened.
The other thing, just as a reminder to everybody, that there's two pathways to central screening. One is the eligibility process that we're talking about using local norms. About 30% of our kids come to central screening that way. The other is through the self-referral process, and about 70% of our students come to the eligibility screening process that way. And that would not, that would not change. Families would still have the ability to self-refer.
Did you break that 70% down, a parent-teacher?
I can't remember which board member asked that. I think that was a-
You did, I'm sorry. I'm done. A next step, okay.
Okay, let's see, Ms. Mesh?
Thank you. I just want to share a couple of pieces here. So when we do look at the history, I hope that we can look specifically to Fairfax County, right? It's one thing, I think we can all support the idea that if someone excels, we'd want to foster that and help them thrive further. But here, we have to be mindful of how it was used and manipulated. So I'd like for that to be an element of that inquiry. And I think it's fair to say, you know, kids, it's about what we invest in them, right? So eventually, we can, we can identify statistics of how kids are gifted or not by the time they hit middle or high school, but that's a product of what we invest early on. In any case, I'm concerned about the situation with the Level 4 in all schools versus centers. And I'd like some clarity. If we have local Level 4s and we're claiming that they're going to be of equal quality, then how is that not creating a separate but equal setup? In having, it makes it difficult for school planning with principals. I've heard from principals, by the way, with the crowding issues and how that ends up posing a number of challenges. The funding to bus kids, you know, across the county, that doesn't seem to be justifiable in light of how much, you know, absence there is for funding to support this. So I'd like for someone to please address that. If we're claiming that it's going to be a sufficient program, why are we then putting in all these funds that we could be redirecting towards efforts like math and reading specialist, or tutoring, or some kind of investment to help with this pipeline issue and help the general ed kids who no one's looking out for?
I, I think I would say, I mean, first, I really appreciate your advocacy to push us in terms of looking at our equity strategies critically and asking, are we doing enough, or could we do more? So thank you for doing that. I think that's incredibly important. I would say, you know, I think there's not a significant difference in terms of like cost savings to be had if you didn't have a center, because you, your major cost drivers, of course, are the teachers that are associated with teaching the students. You know, more than 90% of our budget is in people. So more than 90% of our costs are in the teachers and in the staff that are supporting and educating those students. And there's not really a difference if they receive that education in one school or another. So there's, there's not cost savings really to be had by not having centers, is basically what I'm saying. I think it's a reasonable question to ask, for the board to ask, you know, what is the purpose of the center if you have all of your schools providing local Level 4 programming? Right now, we don't have all of our schools providing local Level 4 programming. We're, you know, we're still 45 schools away from that, and at least three years away from achieving that. So I think it's premature in some ways to really get into that type of discussion, because right now, parents do need to have that choice, because not all families would be able to get access, because we don't have local Level 4 at all of our schools. So when we were thinking about bringing these recommendations forward, knowing that this is a multi-year phase-in process, we haven't even really contemplated the longer-term role of centers. We know that they play a role right now, and we know that they're critical to maintain them right now. So that is not a recommendation that we've brought forward today. But certainly, I appreciate you pushing on the conversation and asking those questions. And I think, you know, we can continue to discuss that. But for right now, I would say our best, our best path forward to providing more equity of access and opportunity is to make sure that we have expansion of local Level 4 programs and continue to provide that choice that we know so many of our families right now value.
I'm out of time, but thank you.
Kees-Gamara?
Thank you. Let me get my camera on. I will start by saying I echo the desire to recognize the history behind how we got where we are. And I think that that will help our community to process some of the steps that we're taking. I'll just make that comment. I do have some concern about the recommendation to remove third-party assessments as well as appeals. And the reason for that concern is, as I believe I recall reading, that the appeals, while students may not have been identified in the first part, you know, via testing, et cetera, that they were able to be more successful in appeals. And so I'm hoping we can look at those tools as yet another way to identify underrepresented groups. Do you have any comments on that? Dr. Presidio?
Well, I can make some brief comments, and then I'd ask Kirsten to maybe say a little bit more about what we're talking about when we talk about the appeals process. The researchers basically noted the equity issues with both external testing and the appeals process is that they are not accessed equally by all families. They're accessed by families of higher socioeconomic means. So if your family can pay for $1,000 or $2,000 external assessment, and you know how to go about doing that, you're obviously much more likely to be able to use that as part of the eligibility process. And many of our families, of course, can't do that. So that was the major issue with outside testing. And that is one of the reasons why we have always offered, at least in the nine years that I've been here, you know, a second FCPS-provided test, right? There's lots of reasons maybe a student might not perform well, you know, one year on one particular test. And that's why we've always allowed them another chance to test. Expected the appeals process, the researchers also found that, again, when you look at the data about who are submitting appeals, again, it's largely correlated with a student's economic status. So those were the major equity issues that I think that they were addressing with both of those areas. And that's where, you know, we're looking and trying to make sure that, you know, on the appeal side, and I'll let Kirsten say a little bit more about this. It's not that you would eliminate appeals, but we've got to make sure that families know how to equitably access that opportunity.
So here's my, here's, and I think there's an underlying assumption. It's my understanding that even though you have educated students of color, those students aren't necessarily being chosen, identified for these programs at a higher rate. Correct me if I'm wrong. And so that's why I'm saying that some of these tools may need to be used to determine whether they are helping you to identify those underrepresented groups. I would say the same thing about JIBBERS. Because in one way, I believe that it has harmed students. And on the other way, sometimes it is getting to those other students. And I'm going to, I have more comments, but I just, I think there's sometimes an assumption that Black and Brown students are in the lower socioeconomic strata. And that's not always true, but those students also are not being identified.
So I would just add that, I mean, the analysis that the researchers did found that when students in underrepresented groups get to central selection, they actually are found eligible quite frequently. So I, I think that the problem is we aren't getting representative groups of students to the central selection, which is part of why we're proposing that we need to make sure we're getting students at every school so that we have more representation across the entire district through that local building norm. Again, that's not, those students are automatically eligible. It's that they get to consideration. So what the researchers found was that of the, of the underrepresented groups who do make it to central selection, they're actually found eligible at pretty high rates. So I think, and they also found that the JIBBERS helps to find students from underrepresented populations.
That's the reason I'm wondering if we can use it, if we can look at those things through that lens of, is it helping us to identify those underrepresented groups? And we should not assume that all students in Black and Brown or various groups are in lower socioeconomic, or don't have parents that have been educated. And I'm going to need a go-back. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I just want to first say I want clarity on what Dr. Brabran thinks is coming out of this meeting, because I, for one board member, am not at all comfortable greenlighting all of these staff recommendations. And a lot of my next steps are focused on getting a lot more robust data, including the Plucker Research Group vetting all of these recommendations to make sure that a program that's been in Fairfax County for more than 40 years is highly regarded and does bring a lot of families to move here and put their kids through Fairfax County schools. So whether it's Dr. Brabran or Dr. Presidio, can you please clarify what you think is happening at the end of this exact work session in terms of greenlighting what you've presented in the 48 slides?
Ms. McLaughlin, the budget, obviously, recommendations need to come out of the budget that I would propose to the board in January. The other recommendations, we are looking for your support to move forward with these recommendations beyond the budget recommendations that we've shared. All of this has been reviewed by Dr. Plucker. This supports his recommendations, and, you know, we'll be glad to answer any next steps. But Dr. Presidio, would you add anything to my comments?
No, I would concur. And I do think it's important to point out that, I mean, again, as you already mentioned, we did share all of the recommendations with Dr. Plucker and the research team, and they definitely supported them and endorsed them moving forward. So, you know, we could get probably written confirmation to that effect, if that would be helpful, because they did review them at length.
But Dr. Presidio, I don't know how they can approve the recommendations when there's a lot of missing information. You haven't said what the COGAT, the national to the local to the school-level norms would be, how you would do your holistic review to really ensure that you're identifying students that are gifted based on the five different categories, and that COGAT is just one of the five. I mean, I appreciate that they could say, it looks like you're going in the right direction. But I feel like, just like with TJ admissions, there's a lot of data analysis that's still not here. The academic metrics Dr. Brabran presented for TJ admissions weren't, in fact, vetted as being highly academic. So I don't know how this board can greenlight, when we've had 90 seconds on top of three minutes, essentially, board members are speaking for, you know, the equivalent of about 54 minutes in a three-and-a-half-hour work session. I just find this very troubling to think we would greenlight anything today. And the PowerPoint said you would be bringing this to the public. We are elected to represent the public. The public needs to vet this, talk with us, and we need another work session to then say, are we sure? But exactly how you've all laid it out is going to present to this county the very best improvements. I'm all for improving the pipeline and access. I'm not for greenlighting this today with the lack of data analysis. Very, very worried about that, and I hope my colleagues are as well.
If I could just comment briefly, and I definitely appreciate your comments, the only thing that I just want to clarify is that we're not making, we're not making any changes here to the eligibility process other than the use of local norms. So all of the additional components of the holistic eligibility process, the submission of student work samples, the multi-reader review, all of those things would still continue. The only thing that we're proposing to change is, instead of using a national norm, using a local norm, again, for the purposes of more equitable identifying students from each of our schools. You know, as Kirsten mentioned at the beginning of the report, we have some schools that identify many students and other schools that identify very few. And what we're trying to do is create a more equitable opportunity in each of our schools. So that's the only thing that would change here. In the data analysis, you know, we tried to do the best we could by providing, you know, the modeling of what that would look like for next year's third-grade class. We certainly could go back and model, you know, previous years. But again, we were looking prospectively about, you know, what would this change yield, and what would it look like if we were to implement this change?
Yes, but Dr. Presidio, if we keep, if we allow choice to continue, we have no idea what the flooding may happen at the centers, because not everybody's going to choose to stay at a local level four. And we already spend $1 million a year or more on transportation. So there's cost and facility questions that we've got to have as a board, vet with the superintendent. And I can't do that today, because we don't have that data. And we also just don't know how many students are going to be identified school by school. As you noted, we'll get into the screening process, but what's going to happen when you can't stand up a local level four if you don't have a critical mass to have them at the local level four? And that is something that has been a challenge for decades. And so I support looking to improve our identification. And finally, I will say the young scholars piece, it bothers me that for decades, we've not done things to actually make that an effective program, and we're getting assurances that it will suddenly happen now. But why wasn't it happening for the last five to 10 years? And please don't say it's because the board didn't fund it out of a priority. We never change a dollar out of the superintendent's budget. So that's a superintendent issue, not the board.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments. I mean, they're all very important, and definitely, I can appreciate the frustration of only having 90 seconds to engage in a discussion on these things. So if I could just add two comments, I do think part of the young scholars' problem was the system's lack of funding the program. We never required it, we never made it mandatory, and we never funded it as a system. And that's what we would look to correct now. And we also never provided, you know, centralized support for the program at a large-scale capacity, which we're suggesting that we would do now. So I do want to make those points about those changes. Definitely, I appreciate your other comments, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marin, followed, oh, I'm sorry, this slides more higher, followed by Ms. Marin.
Thank you. I, one, very much appreciate the hard work, and this is long overdue in terms of the changes we need to make. But I do have concerns, because I feel like there are a lot of holes, or at least questions, that I have left. And I'm just going to list some of those. I still have questions on local norms. We talk about 70% in the referral process, and you talk about needing to redo that, but there really isn't any information on details of how you want to redo the referral process. I know there's concerns about inequities through that referral process, but it's required by the states. I'd like more implementation, more information on what we plan to do to change it. I think Ms. Marin brought up some great points. If I like to see this in sort of a strategic context, as well as really the impact of COVID, not just on budget and staffing, but on the timeline and return to school. Can we, you know, can we do this with fidelity? And that goes to the points that my colleagues made about concerns about fidelity of implementation, and what Ms. Bukarski said about one-time testing for students with disabilities and those with test anxiety. I do have a lot of concerns there, although I do understand. So I don't want to reiterate those points. I just want to say I have those concerns also. I probably want more information. But one of the things I wanted to mention that hasn't been talked about, one of the recommendations here was sort of change the narrative around TJ and highlight what, you know, other possible paths to success and what other schools offer. But I would say that one thing we need to do in addition is actually review what do the other schools offer in terms of enrichment programming, especially around STEM, because I might make the argument that there's inconsistency across the county, and we can't highlight it unless we look at access and programming more strategically and holistically. And that, I have so much more than 90 seconds allowed.
So if I just briefly respond again, you know, great points. I would say, I would want the public to know that any of the changes we're contemplating are included in the report. So we really don't have strategies right now to address the inequities in the referral process. We don't have strong strategies for that. When we have some that are more robust, we would bring them forward and share them with the board and share them with the public. But because of the state regulations, it is really difficult to figure out, you know, how we could make substantive changes there that would be fair and equitable for everyone. I want Kirsten to talk a little bit about the COVID impact to the eligibility process this year. But briefly, I would say in your last point, we have budgeted for another external study of our career in technical education programs that would include looking at STEM programs with the goal of identifying strategies for increasing access to those programs across the county in a more equitable fashion. We know that, you know, we've been doing, basically, is a two-pronged approach. We have specialized programs in our academies, and then we have whatever the school can offer at the base school. And we do think we can do better than that. So we are working on some of those ideas, and we do think that, again, if we could offer more robust offerings at some of our base schools, that we would have additional offerings, you know, outside of TJ, that I think would be even more attractive to many students who might want to stay at their base school. So that is something that we're working on that's attached to-
As well as magnet programs, it was mentioned in the report.
Okay. And also for the community to know, we've had in the board's strategic plan for five years, and the board has advocated for more specialized programming in our high schools and specialized programs like magnet programs, K through 2. The board just hasn't had the ability to have budgets that would be able to support that moving forward. So I definitely want the community to know the board has been advocating for that for a number of years, and hopefully we'll be able to make some progress on that. Kirsten, do you want to talk briefly about the eligibility process during COVID?
Yeah, so, I mean, a lot of, a lot of these recommendations came at a time where we realized we're going to need stakeholder engagement on a lot of the decisions that were going to be made. And we published information about our process, including deadlines, all when students first come back to school. So that's up there by last week of August, first week of September. So we try to keep any of the changes that we made for this year are related to the pandemic and not related to this report as much as possible. It looks like-
Can I clarify my question? I apologize. You're not quite answering the question I was asking. So can I clarify the question?
Okay, yes, please.
It's not on the impact of this year, it's on the ability for us to implement these changes in a three-year timeline or faster, given all of the other needs for COVID and return to school and everything else. So I just want to clarify.
Okay, so that's a different issue. Thank you for clarifying. So yes, I mean, I think we, as an office, have been trying to figure out how to be creative about how we support teachers. As I mentioned earlier, we would be, we would be working with those schools to prepare for their third grade to start next year. That would be going on right now. I know when the regional assistant superintendents were reaching out to schools to figure out who might be in the first year, they were looking really for places where teachers already had some prep going on, so it wouldn't be like completely novice to the, to what they would be asked to do next year. The offer wants to offer some intensive supports to them as part of our summer institute and support them throughout the year next year with third grades starting in terms of planning support and additional support from our office. So as a cohort, we want to support them. One-on-one, we want to support them. And, and we're, and I think the regional assistant superintendents and principals are strategic about which schools to start with, based on some capacity that the school already has.
Thank you. I don't know if there are any more go-banks or not. If not, I might just reach out later and ask more questions.
Okay, Ms. Marin?
Yeah, thank you. You know, once again, I have 90 seconds, sorry, 90 seconds. I'm going to start my comment by saying that, you know, as a board, I'm confused at, or I'm confused about how as a board, we're handling this, because it seems like we've gotten into this pattern of having work sessions and then giving consensus on superintendent action. My understanding is we're sort of, you know, the forum topics introduce the staff, work on it, it comes to us in a work session, we deliberate, we might have follow-up work sessions or talk with one another, and then we vote at a regular meeting. So, and at the outset, I believe Dr. Presidio said there was no action taken. This keeps happening, and I don't think it's the appropriate way for the board to function. So I'm not in any way ready to give consensus to anything today. It's the first time I'm hearing a full flesh out of this. I think also that the process of how we deliberate these things, we really need to examine it. If we're talking in 90-second chunks, and that's not sufficient, we need to figure out ways to work one-on-one and share that transparently until our legislative session, which, agenda, which we're going to talk about soon, maybe we can advocate to do more work with more of us together. The other thing I'll say related specifically to the topic is, we've talked very generally about AAP in advanced. I know the presentation first had something about gifted and identifying giftedness, but I do feel like looking at the numbers of children in AAP, that the conversation needs to be had about process identifies gifted children. What about other children that are identified that perhaps aren't in that very small minority of gifted, but have other levels of advancement? What are we going to do with that data to differentiate instruction? And are we being really clear about what advanced academic program is? Perhaps that's a question, you know, about the function also to the chair. Maybe that's a question initially to that. I would like some feedback on that, please. Thank you. As well as Dr. Brabran, you know, what you have.
Yeah, I mean, the budget stuff obviously won't be approved until we come in January. The local level norms, Sloan, I don't know what the timeline is for us to decide the use of local level norms. When is that, Kirsten or Sloan?
We need to let schools know who is going to be part of the second grade poll by November 1st.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is, that is painting the board again into a corner. It's October 27th, and you've presented us this, and you're expecting to see a consensus today? With everything else that schools are doing on top of that to staff up? This is not a way to do business, and I'd appreciate our chair's input on this, and perhaps the clerk to verify. This is just not a way to handle this work.
I think if I could, and then I want to turn it back to Dr. Brabran, and I definitely appreciate the frustration. A lot of, a lot of this has to do with how things are scheduled with our work sessions, right? But this work session was pushed back as a result of our return to school and other, you know, board business matters that, you know, were more urgent. But obviously, this would not be the optimal timing, and we wouldn't choose to bring this presentation today. And again, I don't know where the board will be in terms of next steps and what we would choose to do going forward. Kirsten's just mentioning that the process and the timeline, that is so time-intensive in terms of the schools gathering the information and creating the files, that does have to start on November 1st. And we don't really have any flexibility with that. So, you know, if we don't move forward with local norms, then we would use the same process that we had used in the past. And unfortunately, that's just kind of how the whole timing of these work sessions came together. So those are really the two options.
May I chime in, Ms. Collins?
Please do, Dr. Anderson.
I'll put on my video as well. I mean, clearly, we've had a lot on our plate, and with all of the issues that this board has been addressing. And we do realize that everybody's pushed up against all of the timelines. But just in, in full transparency, I did not expect that we had, I did not know, rather, that we had a November 1 timeline. And I can definitely appreciate the concerns regarding, regarding the need to turn this around so quickly. I'm happy to discuss in chairs tomorrow for another opportunity for a work session. But I did not expect that we were trying to impact this year's identification process anyway. At least that's what I believed in my, in reading the slides. This is all to impact the following year, depending on what's happening here. So I thought we had a little wiggle room in lieu of this very quick turnaround. If we can do that, we're happy to work with that tomorrow in chairs. But I was not aware that we had this timeline that we are up against. Dr. Brabran, do you want to work through that tomorrow?
Yeah, I'd like to work through that tomorrow in chairs. And, you know, obviously, I mean, we're in a pandemic. We've had a ton of things to try to do. It's been extremely challenging, I know, for the board and for us. I also think the challenge is we're trying to move forward and create equity in our school system in the midst of a pandemic that has shown us the inequities more than ever that exist in our community and in our, in our system. And I think that's the tension. And we all want to do a good job, and we all want to keep moving them all forward. I'd be glad to talk tomorrow about what we can do, either create another work session, or to give the board more time before making a final decision.
I think that would be important. And we, if we could also tease out the pieces on which we, you need some feedback from the board- which we, you need some feedback from the board or some consensus from the board, that would be very helpful. Speaking to the other point that Ms. Marin made regarding where decisions are made, where consensus is being provided or has been provided, I would invite Ms. Mulberg to speak to that because I know as a board, we started doing this back in, in the spring, where consensus is provided at work sessions, there have been opportunities where votes have been taken at work sessions. While I understand that is permissible, it is not necessarily recommended. Ms. Mulberg, can you confirm?
Yes, that's, that's accurate. I, I work for the board and you tell me the schedule and we go from there.
So it does muddy the waters a little bit in terms of the decision-making process, Ms. Marin. I just want to be sure we offered that.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about it. I won't use it more time. Say a lot more, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification, Dr. Anderson. Cowan, do you have additional comments?
I, I also, I saw Dr. Ivy's microphone on. I didn't know if she had something she wanted to add.
No, I'm fine. I'm sorry.
No problem. I certainly just didn't want to speak over you. Um, you know, I would say, as a former teacher, I, I'm a huge fan of local norms. I saw so many times kids, you know, I, I do want people to understand that when we're talking about advanced academics, we are not talking about a conversation about the smartest kids in the room. It is how kids think in a completely different way, where they access things at a level that is just completely different than their peers. And, and I don't think that we're doing the best possible job that we can. I think that we have amazing kids who miss out on the opportunities of Level 4 because they're 1% off or half a percent off a national norm that is just exceedingly different from what Fairfax County and what each school building looks like and what kids have to offer each other and how they can excel given the right opportunities to access curriculum in a different way. And so I'm very supportive of local norms. We are, there are systems all over the country that use this. This is nothing like we're reinventing a new system. This is a, a standard practice that is something that we have not ever done here. So I, I am supportive. One thing, just to push a little bit farther with Ms. Sizemore-Hyzer's comments, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, but I also would like us to look at some opportunities to bring in support for clubs like Odyssey of the Mind, Science, you know, Math Olympiad, Math Counts, in schools where parents are not able to be the resources for that. I think we have got to figure out as a system some way either to incentivize staff or bring in central office folks, but to provide those opportunities as well. I think that's a miss that we have in a lot of our schools. Thanks for letting me go over time.
Thank you. Can somebody speak to what exactly would be the goals of having local Level 4 and centers? And how those will differ and why we are continuing with centers? And at what point have we discussed our centers even best practice? Are the outcomes of kids who are segregated all day long in these centers, you know, better than, than other ways of, of offering advanced academics? But I, I feel that's kind of part of the conversation here when we're talking about adding so many millions of dollars that we have not had yet.
Well, I, I think, Ms. Bukarski, let me try to get my video back on here. I apologize. You know, again, we didn't prepare information on centers for this presentation because it was not one of the recommendations of the researchers to, to eliminate centers. Again, in terms of the comparison between a center and a local Level 4 program, far more similarities than differences. In the similarities column, we're using the same curriculum, students are found eligible through the same eligibility process, and teachers receive the same training, professional development and support. The, the main difference between a center and between a local Level 4 program would be found probably in how many students you might have in your cohort. So in a center, it might not be uncommon, or I should say it is not uncommon, to have several classes in a particular grade level that are entirely made up of students who've been found eligible for Level 4 services. In some of our local Level 4 programs, we have more than one class or a full class of students who've been found eligible for Level 4 services. And in others, we have cluster groups of students who've been found eligible for Level 4 services, along with students who might be receiving Level 3 services and students who might be demonstrating particular strength in a domain area or a content area like math or like language arts. So that really would be the main difference, would be the number of students that might be participating in that school at that particular grade level.
Thank you. And I guess when we are, I'm going back to having this conversation of infusing millions of dollars into this program without, you know, for me, the centers discussion was a very obviously missing part of that expert report and, you know, I was not part of, of how that came together and, you know, I don't know, but I, I just feel like without us having this conversation as a board around centers, what they offer versus our local Level 4s, I just think we are being extremely short-sighted in the way we're making some of these decisions. So my advocacy one would be, let's do of where this program is.
Bukarski, you broke up quite a bit in that last couple of sentences, so I don't know if you want to add it as a next step.
Thank you. I will.
All right, I will just take a quick, quick opportunity to make a couple of comments. I also really think, my understanding around the centers is that we have, since we don't have a local Level 4 in all of our schools, that that is a conversation that we need to have over the next several years because we can't just let go of centers at this point. We still have many parts of the county that that's the only access that students have to that local Level 4 programming. I wanted to mention, just listening to the conversation here, I want to make a comment to my colleagues. As we're talking about tools like the gibbers and this whole referral system being particularly important and identifying some of the underrepresented students for these programs, it sounds very much to me, I, you know, I want to carry this idea forward to our discussion around TJ when we talk about teacher recommendations. You know, I really think that we need to be thinking seriously about, particularly for some of our schools that have not sent many kids to TJ, that teachers may be a wonderful referral process. So we need to look seriously at using teacher recommendations in that process. And I just throw that out as I'm thinking about that. I also wanted to just mention, Rock, China's Sizemore-Hyzer talked a little bit about the, our base schools and what kinds of programs we have available at our base schools. And I just wanted to remind people, I do have that as a next step around that we need to pay very close attention to what we're offering at those schools. Okay, so at this point in time, we have course, as usual, running over, but all board members have had an opportunity to speak for three minutes and 90 seconds. It looks like I have three. Stella, are you looking for a go-back?
No.
Four people that are interested in additional go-backs, so why don't we do a minute for each of those? And I'll just start with the list that we have there. I'll start with Karen Kees-Gamarra.
Thank you. I will try not to use the whole 90 minutes, 90 seconds. I, I put in a next step with respect to how we plan on differentiating those various tools that I mentioned. So hopefully that will be okay with you, Sloan, to be able to identify some of those things and how we might be able to use them, but keep an eye on it to make sure it doesn't present a problem. I also think that as we're looking at our arts, our AARTs, I'm hearing from the community that can be very effective, but that we also need to monitor cultural proficiency. And so I'd like to hear how we might do that. And given these in-depth conversations we're having, I think that we might want to talk about a communications plan with community so that they understand what we're doing because I think that it may well be an ounce of prevention that we needed a month ago.
Well.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, sorry. Definitely, we welcome your additional questions and we'll follow up on those as, as next steps. We are doing a lot of cultural proficiency training. Kirsten mentioned a little bit earlier, working with the Equity Office to make sure that we're doing additional cultural proficiency training for our AAP staff and as part of the Central Selection Committee as well. So those things are underway. And certainly, any changes that we would be implementing, we would be obviously informing the community of those changes. And we did include, obviously, as part of these recommendations, work that we would be doing with our stakeholder groups in our community to make sure that they're not just aware of the changes, but also aware of the program goals and the work that we're doing and have a better understanding of our advanced academic program overall. And that was one of the researchers' recommendations and that is work that has already begun as well.
So just two last comments. I do think that we need to have a clear communications plan around this so that people can know what's at, with respect to magnet schools, I don't want to have to get another of, I, I have some concerns about how we can avoid the types of segregation that we're currently seeing in TJ.
Yes, I would beg my colleagues, urge you, plead with you. This is, comes with a $6.7 million price tag. I think we're all 12 in agreement that we want to improve access to our AAP programs, to have a far more effective identification program, to ensure young scholars is more effective, and that students from kindergarten through 12th grade have a better educational experience. But to ask us to greenlight the superintendent a $6.7 million proposal, this is a major enterprise of the 10th largest school system with a 40-year program in place. I do not understand how we are going to greenlight today this plan because it does come with major operational changes for all of the staff with 150 elementary schools. Please request another work session before we're going to actually greenlight this today. I do not think that the public is going to respect this board for turning around and short of a work session and investing this amount of change and costs associated with it. There's too many unanswered questions right now.
So, Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson, correct me if I didn't have this down, but there will be a discussion at the chair's meeting tomorrow with Dr. Brabran on how we can gain some of this additional information and we will not be making that decision today.
Yes, I do plan on working with Dr. Brabran to determine another period during which we can come back with the questions that are being asked in the next steps so that we have a little bit more opportunity to digest all of this information.
Well, I appreciate that clarity very much because I got the sense from Dr. Presidio and Dr. Brabran that they want to notify the schools November 1st and if we don't, then we would consider the changes to begin in the fall of 2021, which I still think is a more prudent approach. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, do you want to add anything there?
Ms. Cohen, may I ask for a point of order? This is Ms., our point of clarification, this is Ms. Cohen.
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to ask, it, it appears to me that there are not budget implications for the change from national norming to local norming, which is the only thing that's needed by November 1st. If we could get clarification on that, I would appreciate it because it is a real shame to let that go by for another year under the guise that it has budget implications.
Yes, Ms. Cohen, you are correct. The major cost drivers, again, are associated with the additional staff that would come with the additional advanced academic resource teachers. So the only timeline dependent, really, that's imminent is whether or not we would use local norms for this central selection eligibility process this year. And that, that is the only item that is really imminent in terms of timeline because I have an associated budget cost.
So, Ms. Cohen, I would, I would argue, or just ask as a board member, that maybe we need to take a consensus vote on whether today we're prepared to have just a vote solely on the change from national norms to local norms and go from there if that is amenable to you.
I mean, I'm happy to leave the census on whether we're going to vote or not. Dr. Anderson, do you have any other feelings around that?
I'm just putting on my video. I think that's an appropriate step. We do have some other people in the pipeline to speak, so if you want to write that down and then we can, it sounds as if Ms. Cohen is making a, a motion. Ms. Cohen, is that correct?
I'd be very happy to make a motion that we garner consensus today for a swap from national norms to local norming for our selection process this year.
Okay. I was just about to say that would have to be seconded for us to hopefully have some super brief discussions about and then provide, and then act on that motion, which is to provide consensus on local, local norms. Ms. Cohen, did that make sense?
Yes. So, do you want to go ahead and do that now or do you want to listen to these people speak?
I, I'm happy to. We had a motion made, we had.
No, point of order, Madam Chair. There were others of us and then all of a sudden we have a motion on the table. No.
Ms. Mulberg, I believe when there's a motion made, it has to be addressed. Please confirm.
It should be, but we don't usually have motions in work sessions, which is by its rusty, but yes.
The other issue to consider is that the motion was not made after being called on. It was made during a point of clarification, which is not appropriate. So she's welcome to make the motion, right? But when it, when she's called on normally.
So, Ms. Cohen, it looks as if you need to continue with your list and then Ms. Cohen will have to get in line to make her motion.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Cora Sanders.
Thank you. I presume we will talk to the motion that will be put forward a little later, so I won't address that in my comments here. I do support Ms. Kees-Gamarra's emphasis on the importance of communicating clearly with the community what our objectives are and what we are trying to achieve through these deliberations, which does question if we make decisions without going through that deliberation and consultation with the community could be problematic. Additionally, I want a point of clarification from Dr. Presidio and Ms. Mahoney, and that is, what do we have to get done this year and how could we actually do a full assessment of children virtually when our second graders aren't coming back into our buildings until November 30th? Which begs the question as to whether or not we have wiggle room to delay this process until those kids are back in classrooms and are able to, be able to be observed and participate in different. in different ways of learning before we make these decisions.
Sure. So thank you for that question, and I'm going to let Kirsten address in just a minute what the eligibility process would look like this year. But, I mean, basically, to your first question about, you know, what do we have to do now? We don't have to do any of these things. You know, these, the staff's best recommendations, following the external consultants review to address equity issues in our programs, we're excited about these recommendations. You know, these are our best thinking. They represent our best thinking in response to those external recommendations and findings from the external study. We've worked really hard to bring our best thinking to the table that will address and advance equity of access and opportunity to Level 4 services. We're anxious to move forward. We know that the board is anxious. The board's had a number of forum topics and work sessions, you know, where the board has discussed some urgency around these issues. But at the end of the day, if the will of the board is for us to move a little bit more deliberately and slowly, certainly, we could do that.
My other question, though, Dr. Presidio, is why do we have to start the process in November versus taking the time to engage the community and perhaps start the process a little later this year, similar to how we are starting the TJ process later? So could we start this process, say, in January or February, which would allow the opportunity for our kids to be in our classrooms?
I think at best, there would be several weeks that we could push the eligibility process back this year. It's hard to really convey the amount of work associated with this process, both for school-based staff and for central office staff. Given the fact that we're in a pandemic, we do need a little bit more time for school staff to be able to prepare the files. But when we push the timeline back, that gives them less time to prepare the files. Our central office staff that convenes the central screening committee has, needs more time during a pandemic in a virtual environment to do the professional development and to establish the procedures to follow in a virtual environment for central screening process. But we really do need more time in a pandemic, which is why we're trying to move forward with a process that recognizes that and gives schools and the central office team more time to be able to complete the eligibility. We could probably back a few weeks, but we could not push it back significantly by months, no.
With all due respect, the training and planning process could go concurrently with the engagement with the community.
Well, I'm just giving you my best thinking from, you know, being involved in supporting the central office team that does this process. Again, I think we could probably push it back a few weeks, but that would be the maximum in my view.
Thank you.
I would just add, this is all, it's a domino effect. Everything about this is a domino effect. So we have a referral deadline of December 1st, and we have no substitutes this year for AARTs to be able to coordinate getting files together. So we've already put another huge workload on them to try to, in a pandemic, get files put together. We're working with IT to get everything digital so that we can do remote screening this year. There is, there is no wiggle room. And so we need to, I mean, again, this is not finding students eligible, it's just determining who's going to be automatically screened compared to a referral. There's still a lot of opportunities, and most of our students come to this pathway through a referral. So this is really just about making sure that we're getting what our pool is. So we announced the pool the first week of November, so that parents know if I'm not in, if my child's not in the pool, I'm going to turn in my referral by December 1st. And then we have to get students who don't, we don't have an ability test for, they're going to need their negligee in a safe socially-distanced environment in December so that we can have all the files put together, uploaded and digital, and get all this going. So it's, I mean, delaying one piece, it's a chain reaction on everything else, and we don't have substitutes this year to help us out with people getting these things together.
Ms. Seizmarheiser, you have comments?
Yeah, just briefly, I guess I echo some of my colleagues that I am concerned about, I'm very concerned about the impact of COVID in making these changes. I, I don't feel like we have enough information from this presentation to see if this is really implementable during COVID, but this year and going forward. Even the local norming, I don't, there's really not much information on it other than what it does to create sports teams. But I'd like, I really would like information on that. So I just have concerns. I have concerns with the fidelity of implementation for some of these pieces of it, and I have concerns, to be honest, about our students and changing something yet again on them in the middle of COVID, when we all know that we're all suffering from trauma and change is hard. So I guess I, you know, I have a lot of concerns about making some of these changes, at least answers to some of these questions. And that's my biggest advocacy there. And I'd like to know more about the fidelity of implementation for young scholars, for even levels 1 through 3. Are there changes being proposed at levels 1 through 3, and how are we going to implement those? And is there even possibilities to have those at day through 2 to help with building that pipeline? So that's just my concern, is I don't feel like we have enough time to get all of our questions answered today. And I am concerned about putting yet another change on our students when I hear from families and students that this is going to harden for them mentally. So, just wondering.
Okay, so I have a little glitch here. So Ms. Darnett-Kofax will be next, and then Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Cohen.
Yes, happy to be following Ms. Seizmarheiser. My concerns are much the same. For me, I would be happy to see the young scholars model, the, you know, fidelity in programming, front-loading, and things like that, to be something that is presented in Dr. Braybrand's budget. Absolutely. Changing from center-based, which Dr. Presidio, correct me if I'm wrong, you said were national norms. Emerging, emerging best practices, or emerging practices are now going to local norms. Families have to understand what that means. We need data to know what that looks like for our schools, what that will look like. And we have had zero stakeholder engagement, and I understand there'll be a motion coming up here. I think that is, as my colleague stated, Ms. Marin, that is not the way this board has typically operated. That is not the way this board should operate in greenlighting something at a work session before we have had any type of community engagement, nor a greater understanding of what it will mean to the programming if we go from national norms to local norms across the board.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I want to echo what Ms. Darnett-Kofax and Ms. Seizmarheiser just said a moment ago. Dr. Presidio, can you please clarify, when has the COGAT been administered for this academic year?
Kirsten, do you help with the eligibility for this year?
Yeah. With the COGAT, we were not able to give the COGAT this year. The state regulations require us to have one nationally-normed ability test. Most of our current second graders have the negligee in first grade. In cases where students have not, if they don't have a test on record, we are providing in December a safe socially-distanced opportunity for students to come get the negligee, so that we will have the one nationally-normed ability test.
So even though this whole work session's been about the superiority of the COGAT versus the negligee because of COVID, now that's going to be how we select for this year. I really do think that we have got to be careful in understanding what this community expects from this school division and to what everyone has said to date. We want to see a lot of these positive changes vetted by the researchers put into place, but changing how you're going to identify and get kids in, in a COVID year, when the public's going to look at us and say, you haven't even figured out how to get kids back into school. Your referral process of 70% of these kids is all through the kids being in school and teachers being able to know them. I think this is fraught with the school system and the school board losing credibility with the public. I do hope we will postpone this portion of the recommendations and not rush this. And it will come with costs, Dr. Presidio, which we can talk about with Ms. Cohen's conversation. But you're going to have more students, which means you're going to have to have more funding of AR teachers, and that is millions of dollars.
Okay, let me ask this time, Ms. Keys-Gamara, you've had your hand up. Do you have a comment? Okay, no comment. Ms. Cohen?
I'd like to put a motion, just as many of my colleagues have, at any work session. So I, we can argue that all day if we'd like to, when we have a retreat. But for now, I would like to first just say, you know, I reached out to my APAC appointee the minute these slides are up. So, you know, I think that we all have opportunities to reach out. We've had a report that we paid however many, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for, that this was a part of recommendation. We're asking our staff to come with us with best guidance, and we're constantly saying as a board that all schools are not created equally in FCPS. But this is one of those areas where the rubber meets the road. That one of the best things about local norms is that for schools that, where kids have not had the same opportunities as other schools, that they are able to be compared to one another similarly aged peers, instead of, what does it look like if you are at this school that is uber-high performing and trying to compare with somebody who have, may have a very different life experience? So I just would urge my colleagues, again, I understand we're all on this crazy fast track, but instead of filling something in principle that is a piece of a much broader thing that we have to have a conversation for, I would like us today to try to garner consensus over changing for this year, going from national norms to local norms, which, again, will just give us more, a broader pool of kids. Those kids who are getting picked up on national norms are still going to be part of this process. It doesn't make them less academically gifted to be compared to the peers. So that's my motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Cohen, would you mind stating your motion?
Yes, I would like us to provide consensus to Dr. Presidio and his team. We could move from national norms in consideration of students for all levels of advanced academics. We would move to local norms. I said that not well, Eileen, I'm sorry. I'm sure you can fix it.
Thank you. Ms. Homage, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I will say on the points of public engagement, I just, I mean, I think as a board, Ms. Cohen captured it really well, and I would build that we can discuss, this is a facts-based matter, right? We've been looking at the research. There are, there are topics where there's a huge value added, or there are missing pieces without that public engagement. And I think as a board, we have to be wise about that. And I think, you know, the data speaks for itself, and this is an opportunity. Let's not let process or kind of obstructionist arguments of all kinds limit what will only expand opportunity. So I'm 100% behind us.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, would you like to comment?
Yes, I would very much. One of the things that I want to be clear, and I think it's been stated, but I do want to underscore, we've had opportunities in work sessions, oh, I'm sorry, my video is not on. We have had multiple opportunities at work sessions during which consensus has been provided. So this is not setting precedent. This is just following up on what has happened. One of the, the other, the other thing that I want to be sure that we are thinking about is by going into this local Level 4, which has been provided from the researchers as a very high recommendation back in May, we are not going to negatively impact our families. This is going to be a positive impact, if that might result in more students being identified. So I don't see it as a negative, which is going to upend what our families are going through despite all of the COVID-related issues. So I will be in support of this. I don't want to belabor the point, because I know we have another agenda item, but I'm happy to support it, Ms. Cohen and Ms. Homage, because I think our kids deserve that.
Dr. Ivy, I see your hand up. Would you, would you like to make a comment or add some information?
Yes. So I'm turning on my camera. So the team and I did review the recommendations with Dr. Plucker. We sent the report to him ahead of time, and he had an opportunity to review it with his colleagues. And I just found my notes, and I don't know if this may help you, but he felt as though that our response was very comprehensive. He was pleased to see the local norms and felt that it would definitely help in achieving our goal of more equity. He felt that the report was very straightforward. He appreciated that it was phased in, and he felt that it was very well done. And so I just wanted to share that with the board after having found my notes.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Ms. Marin?
Yes, hi. I, Ms. Cohen, I admire your gusto here and the goal you're trying to achieve. At the very best I could do is say that I would agree to issue formal guidance to schools to use local screening, local materials, and give them support in that. There is a pattern that has clearly emerged among the school board and the school division, where the school board is repeatedly surprised by work. Now, I can appreciate, Dr. Presidio, that you and your team are eyes-down doing work, and you've got everything in your head very clearly. This is the first time I'm hearing this proposal, and I will not once again change on this community, the expectations for the year ahead. This is why our school board is overworked, our staff is, and our teachers. We continue to add these things to our plate in an unstrategic, an unstrategic way. This needs to stop happening. I will not say to 100 mil families that the screening is going to be changed for this year and give them days' notice, just as a division gave teachers' notice about returning to school, gave parents about current learning, gave TJ admissions notice. This has got to stop. This is not a way to function in an organization. So if anything, I would do a friendly amendment or a counter motion or something, but for now, I'm just letting, you know, I would do something like supporting use of local norms until something more concrete can be planned out.
Ms. Tolan, may I respond to that?
Yes.
I would just say again, I feel like maybe there's confusion about what local norms are versus national norms. It is, they're still taking the same test, and it's just that, instead of being in the 99th percentile nationally, you look at where all the students in that building scored on that same test, and you figure out among those students who is applicable for what different kinds of differentiation in academic services. So from a classroom perspective, for me, that means that I have an opportunity to have kids who are eligible for more differentiated instruction in all different kinds of areas. It doesn't change who is, this in and of itself does not change who is eligible to get Level 4, to go to a center. If anything, this gives more families who are missing out the opportunity to be, to access programming. It doesn't change whether you're either a Level 2 or you're a Level 2. It doesn't--
Oh, I see. From a 2 to a 4. It's saying it doesn't change eligibility, but it exactly does. Doesn't change eligibility from the eligible, it expands it for those not eligible. Having seen a professional development plan, a timeline, a communications plan to the community informing them about this, this is half-baked. Sorry, I agree with your mission, but it is half-baked.
I would just say, we had a forum topic on AAP, which-- I would just say, we had a forum topic on AAP, which led to a report, a RFP, and a report that was paid for. The report was in a work session. And, no, I'm just trying to explain the process because I want the public to understand this is not in any way meant to be.
The work session is not where we're supposed to make decisions.
I've heard her matter clear. Can we please go through the rest of the people that would like to comment? Karen Corbett Sanders.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tolan, I think somebody called for a point of order.
It was just meant to stop the back and forth so more people could get through. That was it.
Thank you.
So I'm going to try to clarify where we're at, and it may take longer than 90 seconds, so please be patient. I think what we're talking about is a clear communication to the community that the COGAT is not feasible this year because of the pandemic. One. Two, that because of that, we will rely on the NNA, the NAGLIERI tests that were given in first grade to students. We will work with the local staff to identify students based on the NNAT scores from the previous year. And four, we will provide opportunities for parents and teachers to refer, as we have done every other year. Is that where we're at? I just need to understand what we're doing. Dr. Presidio?
Yeah, that's correct. And we have been communicating and will continue to communicate about the use of the NNAT due to the lack of ability to do in-person testing for the COGAT on time. So all of those things are true, all of those things are happening. The only change would be, again, instead of using national norms to set our local, excuse me, instead of using national norms to set our division norms for eligibility, we would use the local school norms to determine the students who would go into the central selection pool. That's the only thing that is different here.
So getting into that pool doesn't guarantee being accepted into a center. It's just based on where we are in this pandemic. This is the most appropriate manner in which we can get people in that, to go through this process. Is that correct?
Yes, so there's two steps basically to the process. The first is, let me say it this way. There's two steps to get to the eligibility table, or what we call the eligibility pool. One is through the universal screening, which uses the NNAT or the COGAT in most years. The other is through the parent referral process. So the only thing that we're talking about being different this year is we would use local norms instead of national norms if students were coming to the table, pool table via the universal screener. That's the only thing that's different.
And this is similar to what we're talking about, TJ admissions, looking at a middle school by middle school basis?
It's analogous for sure, yes.
May I ask, just so that I don't have to go back, that I want to tie what Ms. Cohen is suggesting with what Ms. Keys-Gamara mentioned earlier, which is that we get ourselves tangled up when we have a lack of communications. If what we are talking about is what I have just laid out, then we need to have a clear communication to the public, to all of our parents, that this is what we're doing, especially in light of the pandemic, and that we will continue to talk about refinements of our AAP program going forward. And we invite, and we will be engaging the public in that discussion. Does that make sense, Dr. Presidio and Dr. Brabran?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Would it help if I put this in writing to people?
I think your list would be helpful.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tolan?
I was, I was saying, I think the stuff that you listed would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. I will do so. Where do you want me to put that? And it's not really a next step, or it is, I don't know.
Right, right, right. Why don't you put that together? Can you put it together quickly and maybe send it to Ms. Moberg? And then you can have her put it up on the screen.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I have a communication with Ms. Moberg. She would prefer that you just type it into the stuff.
Okay.
But I'll be there. Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Dr. Presidio, this discussion just keeps bringing up more questions than answers. So please help me and perhaps the public and the board understand. So if we go to local norms on the NNAT for this year for the screening process, that brings in more kids for each of the individual 150 elementary schools. They then get into the division-wide pool for review, correct?
Yes, that's.
Okay. And then how, what is your, your set point saying that a NNAT score is competitive to be identified as a Level 4 learner in Fairfax County schools?
So using local norms, we probably would look at a percentage for each school for qualifying automatically into the central screening pool.
No, I understand that, but that's just, you get, as you noted, getting into the screening pool doesn't mean you're selected. So then, then.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Because, because you've all said that the standardized test still is one of the metrics used in the holistic evaluation process. So if the NNAT scores are going to vary by school to school, then what happens when these kids are all together and their scores potentially look very different because you used local norms, not division-wide norms? And so then what happens in that holistic review in terms of weighting all five of those criteria to identify someone's gifted? Because that's why the Virginia regulation has that, is saying you need a national standardized test for that normative process. As you noted, it's an emerging approach, not a standard approach, start using local norms. What I'm trying to get at here is ultimately, we will be selecting students. I'm trying to understand how much of the driver, the NNAT, has a role. There will be certainly a wider range by using local. And secondly, that all of these students will not stay at their local schools. If they get accepted, they can choose to go to a center. And if we use local norms, school by school, and now they go to a center, and that center has different score points because it's, their local norms, school by school, are different, what are we doing in terms of how the students are all going to succeed together in what's supposed to be a highly gifted center learning environment? These are the things why I'm.
Dr. Presidio, do you have more questions?
Well, you're asking a lot of really good questions. I think the point that I would want the community to understand is that most of these things have always been true, right? So we're not changing the central selection process. So it's always been true that when a student comes forward and we look at their file, that the test score is just one data point along with the other data points of work samples, the JIBR score, and other components of the central review process. Again, the eligibility is determined when we get a two-thirds, basically, majority of the readers who find a student to be eligible or ineligible for the program. So that's always been true in terms of that test score just being one data point among many data points in that referral process. The other thing that's important to point out is, again, what we're talking about with the local norms for the assessment is that that's only 30% of the kids are coming to the table through that process. 70% of the kids are coming without a score that would meet our division norm or, you know, in this case, the local norm. So they don't even have a score that would meet that level. And the Central Selection Committee is having to make determinations based on a score that wouldn't even have met that original universal screening score. So I think it's just important for the community to know that those challenges have always been in the process and always existed in the process. Definitely good question, so thank you.
I appreciate that. I think, again, I'm just, I'm concerned that we're being pressed right now, as Ms. Maron said, and the first time this is being presented to us. And for clarification to what Dr. Ivy and Dr. Presidio and Dr. Brabran have said, this isn't a report. I would really like that to be clear to the public. It's PowerPoint slides, and we cannot keep making important operational decisions on PowerPoint slides. It's not good for the sport, it's not good for the public.
Thank you. Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Ms. Tolan, might I be able to, for the clarification, I apologize. Because there has been, there have been a couple of questions about the communication online. And I do want to just reiterate again that we already communicated to the public about the COGAT test not being available this year and using the NNAT and about the online. So those things are not new pieces of information. The only thing new that we would need to communicate if the board supported Ms. Cohen's motion would be around the use of local norms instead of a national.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. Ms. Darnett Kofax.
My questions were asked by Ms. McLaughlin, so I appreciate that. I too talked to Dr. Plucker several times, and I asked him specifically about where we were going with our plan. And he was very excited about the front-loading, the young scholars, the advanced academic resource teachers. When I asked him the difference between national and local norms, particularly as it related to the centers, he said, "You need to make sure that we have accountability by district to ensure that this program is in place in the way, and so it's meeting the needs of the kids." And that's what I was talking about, where there's two parts earlier, where there is absolutely, I have been asking for AAP education for all, for our, to make sure that potential is identified, and we can find that. But I'm also worried about those advanced learners who need that. I am concerned because I still don't have a good understanding of what this means because we won't have all of these local Level 4s in all of the school sets. So I don't know what that means for our centers. That means a center in one part of the county will look very different than a center in another part of the county. So I am concerned about that. I would like more conversation before I would take a vote on this.
Dr. Presidio, do you want to react to that?
No, not really. I mean, Ms. Darnett Kofax has been an advocate ever since I was on this board for young scholars and full-time advanced academic resource teachers. And I think she's consistently conveyed that today, and she has some additional questions. So I definitely appreciate those.
Thank you. Ms. Omeish.
Okay, a couple of things to put us all on the same page. I, for my, take a moment to step back. Dr. Ivy has shared with us from her findings that Dr. Plucker endorses this. We have the study recommendations, which we all heard when we participated in that conversation. The experts in FCPS are now presenting this as a best practice. All the facts and the data, we have literally commissioned a group to look at this, have suggested that this works, right? Okay, in terms of discussing this, there is a forum topic since January 1st that was filed on that. There was a May presentation, we talked about this after in the budget conversations. We've all talked about it informally. The chair's notes last week announced this conversation was going to come up. And we even voted last week on a forum topic to look into this. So none of this is out of the blue. And now that we're here, I'll start with one question. Dr. Presidio, does this change the family or student experience for this year? If we decide to adopt the local standard? My understanding is no.
No, it would not have any change to the student or family experience.
It's simply how we're going to end up evaluating, deciding based on that information what happens. Guys, this is not going to impact anyone on the ground. This is going to, in fact, give us a tool to look, when we visit this, at what may have worked or not this year. So I, you know, we're spending all this time discussing this, I want to call a question. And it speaks for itself. It's a simple change that's not altering anyone's experience here, but making this better and expanding it for everyone. So I'll call the question.
Ms. Tolan, since Ms. Omeish has called the question, we do need two-thirds of our board to support calling that question. So we need eight of the 12 votes.
Okay, so people can put their hands down, please. Does she need a second?
She doesn't, she does not need a second for calling the question.
Correct. Okay, so who is in favor of calling the question? Okay, I have Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Maron, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Cohen, Anderson, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Tolan. So that is seven.
That's not enough.
One more, one more.
And me, and me, Pacarski.
She's having connection issues.
Okay, now you have that. Yes.
Ms. Tolan? Ms. Tolan, I have a process question now that the question's been called. So I know that Ms. Cohen has asked for us to give direction to the superintendent in this meeting. The question I would have, given the concerns, is, is it possible that what we're giving him is direction to pilot it for this pandemic year? And that the board will continue to deliberate with the superintendent, with our community experts, and determine if this will stay in place beyond this select year, given all the things that are happening? A lack of testing?
Is this an alternate motion? Another argument about the motion on the table?
Mr. Fresh, it's not another argument. I'm asking, is it possible to amend the motion so that it's considered a one-year pilot and not, and it's in perpetuity?
And I would say point of order is not in order to amend a motion that's already been discussed and debate has closed.
I have to agree with Mr. Fresh. That would be an amendment to the motion by Ms. Cohen at this point. So the question has been called, so we do have to address that at this point. So points of order and clarification regarding that subsequent vote.
So the point of order then is, do I just vote on this motion and don't amend it?
This is correct, since the question has been called. That means all discussion is closed.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table that has been seconded and discussed. So, thank you, Ms. Moberg. Here's the motion. To move that the board provide consensus to Dr. Presidio and his team to move from national norms to local norms, consideration of all students for AAP programming. At this point in time, could I see the hands of people on the board that would support moving forward with this? Okay, so this, Keys-Gamara, this Cohen, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Omeish, Dr. Anderson. So that is five, so the motion does not pass.
We also need the no's.
Yes, we also need the no's and the abstentions. I'm sorry, thank you. Those who vote no? Okay, we have Macon McLaughlin, Elaine Tolan, Tammy Darnett Kofax, Melanie Maron, Rashaun Sizemore Hazer. Those that abstained. Karen Corbett Sanders and Philip Pacarski.
Ms. Tolan, did you also vote? Don't forget yourself.
I did.
Yes, Ms. Tolan voted no.
If you have an alternate motion at this time, Ms. McLaughlin, you may offer it since this motion did not, since this motion was voted upon and was closed.
I'm sorry, Dr. Anderson, I actually had language that you asked me to send that we would share with the board. Can we try that?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I did not ask any language. That was the meeting manager.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I did not get any language from you.
Okay, so you know what? We instructed her to do it, and we did not accept it. Okay, so you know what? We instructed her to do it, and we did not accept it. It's in the next step's document.
I can cut and paste and send it to you, Ms. Mulberg, if you prefer.
No, I can get it from the next step. I thought, I thought you were adding it as a next step. So give me one second.
I apologize. I must have misunderstood.
So the purpose of the language is just that people understand what the steps are? Or is this, are you making a motion with this language?
The purpose is to clarify to the public what the next steps are, which clearly state what's happening this year. And it's what I mentioned on, in my earlier statement, and Dr. Presidio did say that that's what he's asking for. So if we can look at that. And it frankly builds on Ms. Keys-Gamarra's advocacy to have clear communications.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tolan, point of order, I thought that we had said this was a next step. So are we on to next steps? Are we going to have Ms. McLaughlin present her alternative?
It is not. No, Ms. Cohen, it wasn't supposed to be a next step. It was trying to add clarity, and they asked me to type it into next steps when I suggested initially I would send it to, in an email.
Okay, so I would just need Dr. Presidio again to clarify that this is what the steps are.
So Ms. Tolan?
Ms. Tolan, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but there's been a question that was asked of me regarding abstentions, and I believe this came up the last time we had an issue where there were several abstentions. Ms. Mulberg, if you could please share with the board what the guidance of our parliamentarian was regarding abstentions and how they're to be treated. This is a question.
Don't have that in front of me, but the vote, even without the abstentions, was still five, five, five.
I don't think that was six or two.
Five, one, two, three. No, it was five, five. I can leave the names back to you if you'd like.
Please, thank you.
Do you want me to? Yes.
Yes, please.
The I-votes were Karen Keys-Gamarra, Laura Jane Kofak, Carl Fresh, O'Brow, and Dr. Anderson. The no vote were Megan McLaughlin, Elaine Tolan, Tammy Darin Kofak, Melanie Marin, and Rochamis Sizer. The abstentions, Karen Corbett Sanders and Selah Pacarski.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have on the screen the steps. So my understanding is we would just like Dr. Presidio to confirm that these are the steps. This is not a motion. And then we will ask if there are any additional motions that anyone would like to put forward.
So thank you, Ms. Tolan. I would say, just taking these one by one, number one, that is correct. It's not possible to get the COGAT this year. Number is correct. We are relying on the N mat this year. Number three, I think that is, that's mostly correct. I don't know if three is necessary, because we will be using the N, our universal screening mechanism, and continuing to use this special section process that we always have. So I don't know if three is necessary. Is correct. We will be providing opportunities for parents and teachers to self-refer. And then number five and six are really in the board's discretion and purview.
Okay, so we have this in our next step. So I think part of the importance of this list, if I understood Ms. Corbett Sanders correctly, is that we just want to make sure that these steps are very clearly communicated with the public as to what we're doing moving forward. So just to close this out, Ms. Corbett Sanders, is that correct?
It is correct. What I was trying to do is explain why we, you know, so that the public knows what we're doing and recognizes that the local staff need to, to identify kids through this process based on their N mat and available work product for referral screening.
Right. Thank you. Okay, I have several board members. Dr. Brabran, I see your hands up. Would you like to speak?
Just a quick clarification. Is number three, say, piece of local level norm or not? That's, that's a number five. It will continue to deliberate. I just want clarification there.
I was actually trying to capture the reality of the situation we are in this year, which is that we will work with the local staff to identify those students. So essentially, it is a local screening at this point to identify those children, but it's not a, but we will continue to refine the process going forward.
Then, Chair, then a point of order. We already voted on that, so that should be taken out. That is correct.
That's fine if the rest stays.
Okay, so at this point, I have four people with their hands up. Dr. Anderson, Ms. McLaughlin, and Sizer. Do you all have comments? Ms. Cohen? Dr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I'm just a little bit confused by this motion, because I believe some of these are appropriate next steps. And I also believe that much of this is already taken place, because the COGAT is not possible, and the public has already been informed. Is that not correct, Dr. Presidio?
That is correct. We've already informed the public of that in multiple ways, both through the local schools and through the division. We have informed them that we're using the N mat, and we inform them about the timelines. So that is correct.
So then number one?
This is not a motion. It's, it will be in the next step.
So why are we not addressing the next steps with the others? I guess I'm confused. Why was this pulled out as a next step to be treated singly?
May I speak to that, Dr. Anderson?
Please, thank you.
Reason this was put up was I was trying to give clarity prior to the, to, trying to give clarity when the last motion was being put forward, because despite your understanding, the public is not fully aware of the COGAT not being possible this year. And they aren't really clear as to the, as to the process. And so what I was trying to do is to make sure and build on Ms. Keys-Gamarra's recommendation for clear communications, that we are clear with the public, what we as a board are doing and what the school system is doing, so that we don't get caught up in, as Ms. Marin says, being people not understanding where we're at and what we're doing.
Absolutely. That makes perfect sense. I would just, it just makes sense, the reason to me, that it be placed back into the list of next steps for us to work through, because I'm not sure what we're doing here. I thought this was a motion for us to vote upon. If it's a next step, it needs to go back into the list of next steps. Thank you.
That's what we'll be doing. Ms. Darnett Kofak?
No, what Dr. Anderson said was my point. I didn't understand why we were taking that step, that up, next steps. So if we're just going to go through the next steps, I would like us to proceed there after everybody has a chance to speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Just quickly, I actually, if I understand where Ms. Corbett Sanders is going with this, we do need to pull out the first one on the COGAT, because it was already communicated. We pulled out number three, the original number three, because the board had already not supported that direction at this time. I looked at that, we're trying to go quickly through next steps. If the majority of the board agrees with what remains there in her motion, it just makes our work quicker, that that's consensus of the board, that we agree with what she's put in front of us. So I can support this now that it's been refined, and it will make our next steps process go quicker, I hope.
Yes. Ms. Cohen?
Ms. McLaughlin, does that mean that you're not putting forward a motion, an alternate motion?
No, I, I, I think that where this board is right now is we need more information. So, and given that, as Dr. Presidio said, everyone can refer their child. The test is not a barrier. What we need is our, our staff in the building, which Ms., which Ms. Corbett Sanders has in there right now, saying, encouraging teachers and parents to refer their kids. Seventy percent are already referred without test scores. We just need to get better fidelity this year with referring on all the other things that our teachers and parents are seeing.
I just would love to use my time, just again, to communicate to the public that the previous board asked for a works, a report on equity in AAP. And then it didn't come to the board until we had a new board, a work session on it. These were part of the recommendations. Again, that there are significant problems in the referral part. In fact, they recognized, they recommended really refining that piece, which is not super possible in the time of COVID, which is what our folks have said. And then our staff experts came back, but their answer to the work session in, in this work session. So just for the public, I think we've really gotten off track of, of what is this process? And the process is that this work session is a response to a report that your tax dollars paid for about how to improve equity in AAP. So I just want to remind that to the public, because it seems like we've really super gotten off, off track here.
Ms. Sizer?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to follow along after my colleague, Ms. Cohen. And I understand, I appreciate her statement that, you know, she's been a teacher in a second-grade classroom, and so has seen the importance of local norms. What I, I just want to say that I don't know if we've gotten off track. I think that may be a bit of a broad way of explaining it. We, as a new board, received a report. We received recommendations. We want information about the recommendations. This is the first chance we've had to discuss these recommendations. And we, some of us have valid questions about these recommendations and what we are, and want more information. It doesn't mean that we don't want to address the underlying equity issues. We all very much want to address the underlying equity issues, but we also have a duty to be informed and make sure our public is informed. And, you know, a little thing called COVID did happen in between when we had the AAP report and now, and it does impact our ability to make sure, and our staff's ability, to make sure that we have all the proper information. So I do think that I want, you know, to follow with Ms. Cohen, that I want our public to know that I think it is very important that we, it's not rushing, it comes a long-term rushing, but we need to make sure that we have a process that we're not piecemealing through things, and we have the information we need based on this, these recommendations, which we just got. So I would be in support of Ms. McLaughlin's point of having a pilot program this year to try the local norms and see what happens with that. I think that's a great suggestion, but I just want to reassure people that this is a process that many of us are, you know, in terms of the equity and access to AAP, are deeply committed to. We also want to make sure we do it in a way that is, it has fidelity. That's all.
Okay, I would like to make a suggestion at this point. I see lots of hands coming up here. We have spoken about this now an hour and 15 minutes or more past our time. We have a feeling where the board is right now. Dr. Anderson did offer to speak again in the chairs meeting tomorrow as to if there are next steps that we need to have associated with this. So at this point in time, I would like to draw people's attention to our next list.
I try to use my speaking time judiciously. I don't take every opportunity. I don't take every go-back. I'd like to be able to have my hand raised, recognized.
Go ahead, Mr. Fresh.
I'd like to make a motion along the lines of what Megan McLaughlin was recommending, that we pilot the, the normal standard as opposed to national standard.
I second that motion.
So we'll need a discussion on that motion, Ms. Tolan? We can brief?
May we suggest that the discussion's already taken care of, and we could probably just vote on it?
Ms. Tolan is the meeting manager. I want to defer to her.
Somebody else make a motion to question right at the beginning.
Okay, so Carl? Fresh has made a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
A second to that motion?
I'm sorry, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Okay, I've got several hands up here. We need to discuss this motion.
Calling the question, Tolan?
Dr. Anderson is calling the question.
And we need eight for that to be supported.
Point of order, can you call the question at any time, or in order would your hand be?
You have to be recognized.
I apologize, Ms. Tolan.
Okay, so Dr. Anderson?
Or I could speak to my motion?
Okay, Mr. Fresh, please speak to your motion.
I'll just simply say that we've had a robust conversation about this issue, and it seemed that there was a middle ground staked out by Ms. McLaughlin to pilot this motion. So that's why I'm making the motion.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra, would you like to speak to your second?
What he said, I'd like to vote as quickly. I think we've discussed it already. So I'd like to make a decision so that the superintendent and Dr. Presidio can feel like they need, can move.
Point of order?
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
That was Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I, I fully support going directly to a vote. The only thing I have to offer is that it's typically called the local norms versus local standard as opposed to national norms.
The local norm. Go ahead.
Ms. Tolan, I have a question for the maker of the motion.
All right, Ms. McLaughlin? Then, Ms. Marin would like to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Fresh, I really appreciated your comment earlier about opportunity costs. And what I can see is opportunity costs are figure out facility spaces by our assistant superintendent facilities, time to develop PD and train staff on new screening procedures, time for staff to communicate to families, especially those who are previously underserved. So that's the Office of Communications and Family Engagement. I think it is ill-advised to ask for a pilot to happen without knowing fiduciary costs. And ultimately, we need to focus on getting kids back to school. I know this is important, folks. I know it. This is crazy. Okay? Please, fully let our time. If we direct the assistant superintendent for instructional services to do this, this is one more thing on his plate that he needs to manage with his staff instead of looking at returning to school. I will not support this motion.
Ms. McLaughlin, do you have a question?
Ms. Tolan, I've had my hand up for a little while as well. I apologize, but I understand.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to take my turn in the rotation. I just wanted to make sure I could ask a question before we voted.
Okay, then let's go through the list for discussion. Ms. Sizer?
Just briefly, I'd like to ask staff what a pilot program might look like. And I know this is a new thought, so you may not have the answer to that, but what your initial thoughts on hearing this might be and the workload on that to Ms. Marin's point. point.
Dr. Presidio, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you. Trying to get my microphone on and, and I appreciate the question because, I mean, I would respond to it based on the language in the motion. Frankly, I'm not entirely clear on the scope of the pilot. So my current reading, based on the discussion of the board, would be that we use local norms this year as the gateway to the eligibility screening process and that that would be revisited in the future, whether or not we would continue to use local norms. We would, we would essentially pilot the use of local norms as part of our eligibility process this year. So.
That was, that was my understanding, sorry, was that it would pilot this year and then have more information from new data as to how, you know, it's kind of what it looked like in the process as well and revisit it. So this motion doesn't have this year on it, which is what Ms. McLaughlin had mentioned as pilot this year. So I'm, I'm a little confused. The motion itself as written is very vague and I don't think it encompasses what Ms. McLaughlin said.
But you could take this time to make a, offer an amendment.
But Carl, I think that's what you meant. I think it's.
It is, but if, if she wants to have it clear, she, you know, clarified, she can add, she can make a motion to amend the, the motion to include the words, you know, to refine it to this year.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Before I do, I would like to ask Mr. Presidio to answer the question about workload with respect to return to school and piloting of local norms, procedure process for this. For Dr. Braber and anyone, the staff, and workload issue specifically with return to school.
Well, you know, obviously workload is a concern for anybody working in our community. So I guess I would just put it this way. I mean, this is work that the board needs to decide how urgent it is that we do it now. I believe from listening to the work sessions and the forums is that there was urgency to do this now, which is why we brought forward the proposal to do it now. If it goes differently, then certainly we would respect that and act accordingly, but I believe that it's important to do this work now and we would be prepared to do it if the board supported it.
Would the workload be less if we did not do this right now? I mean, given COVID's impact on the process, which difference would that make?
I think it would be negligible. I mean, COVID has, has impacted the entire, well, COVID has impacted everything that we do operationally and it's certainly impacted everything that we're doing operationally here with respect to the, the eligibility process. So I don't think it would really make much difference.
All right, well, given that, I would like to make a family amendment to say I move that we pilot the local norms for this year and revisit the issue before, before making that change permanent.
Just needs a second, then we can vote on it or discuss and then vote on it. I would second it.
For this year and, and then revisit before making the change permanent. I can't see the motion anymore, so I don't know if that's written there or not.
Is, I took it down, so that we create a second motion. This is separate from the one that was, that's on the table.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We can discuss this motion. Megan McLaughlin, do you have comments on this motion?
I, I'm like everybody else, I just need to see what the amended motion is. And as I understand it, process-wise is, I thought in work sessions, our parliamentary procedure can be a little more lax, which is if Carl and Karen Keyes are fine with Ms. Rocha Seismar Heiser's, we don't have to start deliberating these like we do in a normal Roberts rules in a board meeting. Is that true?
I mean, I, I would argue that us practicing Roberts rules would have a tremendously positive impact on our board meetings.
I'm fine with it, I'm just looking at time for today, that's all, Mr. Fresh, just looking to.
You don't have to see that our opportunities, right?
Sure, well, then whatever it is, I'll speak to this new amendment. So.
Go ahead, Megan.
So I, I think that this is an improvement in making sure that we're talking about for this year, that it needs to be revisited before the change is permanent. I would like to see that this amendment had said something about data analysis, but I'm going to presume Dr. Presidio and Dr. Braber and understand that. I can, I can support this because right now, as we understand it, we're, this isn't a normal year for the AP selection process anyway. We're not using the COGAT, so we don't have kids in schools right now to look at their school-related work. This is going to be a very highly unusual year. So if we want to pilot and see how many more kids make it in school by school to the screening process and what's the net result, I, I don't know that we're going to have too many unintended consequences, but I do want to prepare everybody that the only thing that still gives me pause is staff has not indicated whether this is going to create a larger number of students who are now identified as level four over last year. And if they all elect to stay at centers because their schools don't have a local level four in place for next fall, or they don't have the confidence in a brand-new local level four, what are we doing to the centers? And that's the outstanding question that gives me pause and that's why I didn't bring forward the pilot proposal.
Dr. Presidio, do you want to?
Yes, Ms. Tolan, I want to make sure Dr. Presidio knows, my question is, what, what is the backup plan if we do end up inviting and accepting far more level fours than we've ever had and what that might do to the centers?
Well, I guess I would say, you know, it's difficult to predict how many of the students would actually be found eligible after we use local norms to identify the pool. And I don't anticipate that being a problem in terms of having a larger students that would now elect to attend the center versus their local school. There certainly be some. Again, we have 97 local, and we've never run into a problem with having a mass exodus to, to the centers when we've, you know, expanded programming in the past. It's always balanced out and worked out in the end. And we're working hard to make sure that we're, for next year, the schools that we would be implementing local level four programs in as well, our schools that do have facilities capacity to handle additional kids if they chose to come back to the center. So that's really the best, you know, answer that I can give you is that, you know, based on past experience, that hasn't been an issue, but it is hard, as you point out. It's really impossible to predict, you know, how many of those kids would actually be found eligible and then what selection they would take in terms of either choosing center or choosing the base school.
Are you just taking your hand down? Ms. Dernak Kofax?
Yeah, I'm going to support this because obviously it moves us closer to what the original motion was and that failed. But I do want to say, you know, we're, we're, I don't know that we're being judicious with our resources, seeing that we're going to revisit this, we're going to have a conversation about it and then look at what we already know, the experts have said, right? We've heard from our, our FCPS staff, we've heard from our consultants, we paid tons of money for, why else do we pay them so that we can implement it? But I just wanted to point that out because later, when we do have this conversation, we're going to end up in a place where folks are going to try to use the same reasons and arguments and I hope that at that point, we're all going to be on the same page. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dernak Kofax.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Tolan, I'm back. I was kicked off for a moment.
Okay, who do you want to go?
Go ahead, Ms. Kofax, and then we'll have Dr. Anderson.
All right, just for the, for the very same reasons as I said to everyone before, I am all for the other recommendations. This one I do not feel we are ready for. And just to be clear, our experts did not green light this for our centers. They did not, it was not in there as far as local norms. So please quit, stop saying that that happened because there was the, the piece about needing accountability. Local norms should and could be used, but we didn't talk about it. They talked about that in local level four services, which to this point are very different than the centers. So again, in support of all the other recommendations that have been here today, potential identification, all of those things I talked about, young scholars, arts, but this one, we need conversation, further conversation to see what happens, what, all the things Ms. McLaughlin spoke about in her original points, we are not certain what these numbers will look like and I don't think we are ready to do this because in some cases, we don't have a local level four and these kids will go right to the center and we're not sure what that will look like. So too many questions, I can't support this.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, I was definitely picked off. I would like to call the question on this matter.
This would be for the amendment.
Yes, I move that we pilot the local norms for this year, the second one. I would like to call the question because I think we've discussed this quite a bit at this point.
Since there's nobody else asking to speak, do we really need to call the question? Can't we just vote?
I wasn't sure where we were. Can we just go? Ms. Tolan, I'm ready.
Okay, you're ready. Okay, let's have a show of hands for those that can support on the motion that we pilot the local norms for this year as opposed to national norms and revisit before making the change permanent. Okay, for yes, I have Dr. Anderson, Ms. Amash, Pizkamara, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Mr. Fresh. Okay, if you can put your hands down, please. Those who vote no. Ms. Maron, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Dernak Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Bukarski. Okay, do we have any abstentions? Ms. Seismar Heiser. Okay, so the motion does not pass. Okay, with that, Dr. Anderson, how would you like to handle our next list?
I'm sorry, could you, could you tell us how many people voted in favor of that motion?
Yeah, there were six ayes, five noes, and one abstention. So I believe it passes unless I'm mistaken.
My understanding that passes with an abstention, thank you.
Yes, that's, yes.
Thank you, that clarification.
Did it pass or not?
It did pass, six ayes, five noes, one abstention.
Because it has to be the majority of the voting body.
Oh, and with an abstention, that it's not included as a voting person, so it passes six to five, correct?
Yes, this was the question that we dealt in depth with, with Mr. Morgan.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Ms. Maron?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Mulberg. Since we are voting in a, well, it's not technically, right, because it's a work session, there is not space in Board docs, or is there space in Board docs where you can cast these motions and actions taken?
Yeah, I'm intending to do that, I just can't do it while I'm on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tolan, ask for your question. At this point, we need to review the next steps.
Okay, I still need to put mine in.
Ms. Tolan, process question, please.
Yeah.
So as I understood it, we voted on Ms. Seismar Heiser and Mr. Fresh's amendment. It passed six to five. Now it becomes the main motion and people need to vote on the main motion, correct?
Technically, yes. That's correct, Ms. Tolan.
Okay.
Now we would need to vote on the.
Madam, point of order, since this is a work session, can we just simply remove that's the first motion off the table? Do we have to go through that formality?
What I understand is once a motion has been made, it makes it, it makes it technical and makes it formal.
I understand, but we said repeatedly that during these work sessions, we're not as formal. I, I understand and.
What we can provide, perhaps this is taking wide latitude, maybe without objection, we do not take up the other matter. If there are objections, then we will need to have a formal vote.
So that would be my recommendation, thank you.
Okay, could I please see a show of hands of anyone that would object with us moving forward and not doing another vote? Ms. Dernak Kofax?
Since there is an objection, we do need to have the full vote on the first motion.
Pardon me, wouldn't this be just a vote on the amended motion?
We voted on the amendment motion.
You don't vote, you don't, you don't vote for the, the primary motion if it's been amended.
Can they please be posted back?
Once the, the main motion has been amended, it is the main motion.
Okay, so we voted on.
The previous, the, the one that's up there before, this is the first version, no longer exists.
Okay, so we have voted on the second, the amended motion. Is there another step that we need to take or another vote that we need to take?
Ms. Mulberg, can you confirm this piece if you are able?
Yes, you voted to amend the main motion, you're now voting on the main motion, which is what, I believe what Ms. McLaughlin said a few minutes ago.
Okay, so this is now our main motion. We move that we pilot the local norms for this year as opposed to national norms and revisit before making the change permanent. All those that can support the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Fresh, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Amash, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Pizkamara. All those that cannot support the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, Ms. Maron, Seismar Heiser, Bukarski, Ms. Dernak Kofax, Ms. Tolan, and Ms. McLaughlin. Okay, so I believe we are six to six. Is there anyone abstaining?
No, that's it.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, can, you voted no, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the vote on this motion is six to six.
That fails. Can you bring back, Ms. Mulberg, the motion that was six, five, one, that did pass because of the abstention?
Okay, my, same motion. Basically voted to approve the amendment.
I'm not sure that's correct, but I'll be honest, I need to double check this with other persons. Ms. Mulberg, if you can share.
Dr. Anderson, I'm not familiar, I'm not understanding what motion you're referring to.
We had a vote, I'm so sorry, let me put my camera on. We had a vote that was six, five, one, which carried because the majority voted in favor of.
That was to amend the main motion to read as it's, as it's on the table.
It wasn't in support of it, it was just to amend it?
It was to amend it, yes.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, may I ask a point of order? Or maybe it's more pervert for Ms. Tolan, I apologize, I'm not sure where me and the manager chair falls here.
Please come ahead, Ms. Cowan.
Um, is it appropriate to ask for a, a, I just had a couple of stacks of people who did not apparently understand that that's what they are voting on? Or is that not appropriate?
That is appropriate, especially in this case where it's very confusing.
So I'd like to simply request that, Ms. Ms. Tolan.
Okay. Okay, um, I know hands raised. So I would propose that we, um, Ms. Mulberg, if you can put the motion back up and we will vote on this motion. Thank you. Okay, we are voting on whether we want to approve or not this motion. I move that we pilot the local norms for this year as opposed to national norms and revisit before making the change permanent. Those in favor of passing this motion, please raise your hand. Of Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cowan, Ms. Corbin Sanders, Ms. Omech, Ms. Pies Gamara, and Dr. Anderson. Those opposed to this motion? Okay, those voting no, Ms. Marin, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Tolan, and Ms. Darno Kofax. Who is abstaining?
I'm sorry, Ms. Tolan, I had connection issues and it dropped Ms. Bukarski, so she was not able to vote.
Same, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I vote no on this, this is Stella.
Okay, and Ms. Seismar Heiser, are you voting, are you abstaining?
No, I, I, I need to vote no, I need more information about local norms.
Um, those who are voting no, please raise your hand. Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Darno Kofax, and Ms. Marin.
Once again, it's a tie vote and it fails.
Ms. Tolan, may I be recognized for a procedural question?
Please.
I know Mr. Frisch said it's good for us to practice our parliamentary procedure. As I understand in the future, um, if we were at the board table, the only way this motion could have been recalled is a person who voted no would agree to bring it back to the table. People who voted yes technically can't bring back something that gets voted no. Am I correct, Ms. Mulberg?
Uh, you, I think so, but in this case, it was extremely confused.
Oh yeah, no, I'm okay. I just want to make sure that, that when we get to the board table and people draw on today's experience and we can have Jason clarify it. But it was always explained to me that in our board work, when we take a formal action, the only way you can bring back a vote that has occurred is if the person who voted no against it wants to bring it back to the body and then the body will revisit something it already voted on. So maybe that's just a, a procedural next step that we should have Jason send a memo to the board on. I mean, I totally agree that this has been confusing, so I didn't mind it. I just don't want people to get the wrong impression that this is okay when we are in a formal vote.
All right, thank you for that clarification, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Anderson, can you do one to next steps at this point?
Yes, please. I just wanted to confirm Ms. McLaughlin's, um, question. I'm having the same conversation with Mr. Morgan for clarification for us moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, if you, as board members, if you have not put your next steps into the next step document, please do that now. We'll pull those up. Okay, I will, please look through these, um. Ms. Bukarski, are you on?
I'm here, I'm here.
Do you want to maybe, uh, take people through next steps? I'm taking mine in.
Yes, absolutely. Let the first one, I mean, if, if everybody could just take a look at these very quickly. It is late, I don't know if, you know, we want to go through each one of these one by one, or if this is something that we can look at in chairs with Dr. Braybrand. Ms. McLaughlin, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. I was going to suggest that, that, um, chairs can review these with the superintendent. If there's any concerns between chair, vice chair, and superintendent on addressing these next steps, they can revisit with that board member. And, um, that board member could then flex the board if, if it's being identified as not global within chairs.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, Dr. Anderson, do you want to, um, jump in here? Is that okay with both of you?
I can certainly start reviewing this at chairs tomorrow if Chairman Anderson so advises.
Ms. Bukarski, my hands up, please.
Thank you, I'm working off of the phone, I'm sorry. Okay. Ms. Anders, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I don't in principle have a problem with all of us, um, making one motion and approving this. However, there are some places where there's some redundancy in slight modifications. That's my first concern. The second concern is that, um, I discovered this morning when I was visiting a school that a next step that had been, um, accepted by the superintendent was not actually followed through in its implementation. And the superintendent did not call me about that. And so I do think that it is very important, and I urge, uh, the superintendent that if you cannot support something on this list, that you, um, have a conversation with the board member whose name is next to the, uh, request and that there is some, um, agreed upon process for reaching consensus on how for mediating that request that had been approved by the whole board.
Dr. Anderson?
I'm here, I had my hand up, I was just waiting to be recognized, I didn't realize you were working off the phone. As per what has been discussed, I'm going to put my camera on, I'm so sorry. I'm happy to have this conversation with Dr. Braybrand in chairs, but I do want to be sure that we are very clear on the next steps and their goal, which is provide information and not direction. I wouldn't want anybody to be surprised if we do have a measure that provides a direction and we don't follow that. Because if it provides a direction, we must vote on that. So I would like minimally ones to review for any of the next steps that provide a direction. But if, uh, but in terms of redundancy, we're happy to take care of that, um, at a later point.
I think, Mr. Frisch, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that we can ask staff if, you know, we tend to do a significant volume of next steps in this meeting alone, thirty-five. And if there's great concern out there that, um, the staff should be focused entirely in one other direction. I just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with giving them all of these next steps on top of the hundreds of other next steps we've given them over the last several months.
I agree, Mr. Frisch, and if people could just look at these and please try to, um, maybe limit them. If you would be, uh, willing to do that, to maybe two apiece. If not, you know, Dr. Braybrand, you need to jump in here as to what can be done or not. Or we'll have to go through every single one of these.
Yeah, I, I'll say is I can only see twelve, I didn't, I didn't realize there's thirty-five. And I do think there's a board retreat coming soon. I did talk to the county executive yesterday, I know you all talk about doing things similar to the county. And there are no next steps that are done when there's presentations to the county. We're drowning in work and we're not making, um, we want to be successful, we want you to be successful. And we've just got to find a better mousetrap. And I know Auditor General is looking at it, which is a great, a great thing. I was interviewed earlier this week and I believe many of you will be interviewed. And I look forward to a better approach so that we can get the work done that I know our community and you all want us to get done and to do it well. But, um, as, as far as today, uh, yeah, I mean, I agree, if it's direction, the board needs to decide. If it's information, I can review it in chairs tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, um, the, okay. I think we're going to have to go through these at this point. I, I, we're just spinning our wheels. So please take a look, please see if anything can be permitted. Please ensure that these are information you need to make decisions and not just information for the sake of information.
Ms. Bukarski, this is Megan, I have a process question.
Go ahead.
So I, I'm, so the way this is posted right now, it, Ms. Mulberg is controlling the, um, up and down. So, uh, what Mr. Frisch said, I guess it starts at three. So it goes down to line thirty-five, so I guess we do have thirty, thirty-three questions in total. And the question again was that there could be some overlaps in the things we're asking versus what our colleagues may have asked. I, I, I still suggest that we just go, let you guys review these in the, with the, in the chairs. Go back to any board members where you have a concern that it's not going to be done in, you know, the near term. But to Dr. Braybrand's point, please do not compare us to the board supervisors. Because I don't want to get into a comparison of what, um, information the county executive brings to the board supervisor to make educated decisions, the timeliness, the comprehensiveness of it. So we don't want to go there. The bottom line is we should be mindful of our questions, but I, I don't appreciate the superintendent implying that this school board asks too many questions and we need to be better like the board supervisors. They're not the same.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I, I think, I think the bottom line is our staff is a lot of work on their plates and we all agree that the work should be towards getting kids back in school. Okay, unless there are objections or anybody else seeks to speak to this, we will go ahead then and take it and look at it. If we could keep the link open, um, until later tonight, so people can see and tweak their next steps, we can go over it with Dr. Anderson and Dr. Braybrand in chairs.
May, may I make one suggestion?
Go ahead.
I think the number of next steps here really identifies the need for that part of discussion that we discussed. So perhaps, you know, we should look at those in that light. Uh, I'm happy if someone to contact me if they have questions about what I have here. But I do think this is a reflection of, of a need for further discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamara, I definitely agree with you on that and I, we will definitely talk about that. Thank you, I think we can wrap these up then. I think we are ready for our next part of.
Are we going to take a break? Or what are we, are we, a call to the board, what, what would you like to do, Dr. Anderson?
I'm so sorry, Ms. Um, Ms. Bukarski got dropped off, asked me to take over. It is now four fifty-five. We'll take a quick break and come back at five, five minutes really, just for a bio break. And then we'll start it with the legislative program.
Thank you, everyone.